You are watching Access LaPorte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is the August 4th meeting for the Michigan City Common Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Common Council meeting. Today is Monday, August 4th, 2025. I would ask if you would all please silence all electronic devices and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silent prayer. Madam Clerk on roll call, please.
Mr. Beatry.
Present.
Mr. Coulter.
Present.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Dr. Cora.
Present.
Ms. Lee.
Present.
Ms. Maldonar.
Present.
Mr. Nelson.
Present.
Mr. Preszbalinski.
Present.
And Ms. Tillman.
Present.
We have nine present and no one absent.
We do have a quorum and we will move on to our agenda. The approval of the minutes for the regular council hybrid and zoom July 15, 2025, and executive session July 23, 2025. The regular council minutes are not available at this time. They will be available and put on our next council agenda. The executive session that was held on July 23, 2025, I would just like to indicate that the council did meet on July 23, 2025. There was no decisions or votes made at that time. Next, we have reports of standing committees. Reports of standing committees.
Can I make an announcement real quick? I may stand up from time to time.
And Councilman Dabney.
Yes, you may see me stand up from time to time because I recently had hip replacement surgery. You may need to stretch my leg out. So if you see me standing up, I am not walking out of the meeting. I'm just standing up in order to stretch out this hip. So we may proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, any reports of standing committees? There are no reports of standing committees.
Did you skip over commissions? Boards and commissions?
No, we're not there yet. It's later in the agenda.
I'm sorry.
No problem. For the Finance Committee meeting, the Michigan City Finance Committee met on today at 6:00 PM. The Michigan City Riverboat and Boyd Claims Docket for August 4th, 2025. Riverboat Fund 2235, $37,799.86. Riverboat EFT Fund 2235, $500,000. Rainy Day Fund 2236, $209,508.66. Boyd Development Fund 2504, $0. Total claims, $747,308.52. Those claims were for LaPorte Chrysler for the leasing of the police vehicles. City of Michigan City of the $500,000, which was for which was approved by the council in our budget, which was for the transfer to the NVH operating of the $500,000 and the $209,508.66 was for Ferguson Water Works, which was for the materials for the US-20 annexation area extension. May I entertain a motion for approval?
So move.
Have a motion by Councilman Nelson, second by Councilman Dabney. Madam Clerk on the vote, please.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Dr. Cora.
Aye.
Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Maldonar.
Aye.
Mr. Nelson.
Aye.
Mr. Preszbalinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Beatry.
Aye.
And Mr. Coulter.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Claims docket for August 4th, 2025 has been approved. The City of Michigan City 2025 Riverboat Rainy Day Fund Statement of Cash Position, Fund Type 2235 Ending Balance, $3,314,873.9. Fund Type 2236 Rainy Day Fund Ending Balance, $1,167,490.42. The fiscal year to date, August 6, 2025, grand total ending balance, $4,482,363.51. That concludes for our finance, our claims docket. Moving on to reports from boards and commissions. Any reports from boards and commission? Councilwoman Maldonar.
Thank you very much. I'm Madam President. I'm going to make an announcement for the Michigan City Sustainability Commission. And this Thursday, August, what is the date this Thursday, whatever it is, at 6:30 PM, via Save the Dunes Facebook Live or Zoom, we're going to have a very special program that's going to be presented by the EPA. This is a special and rare program because very rarely do managers of the EPA get permission to actually present to the public. The title of the program is going to be reclaiming waterways, Eastern Grand Calumet River, and the lagoons in Gary. So I invite everybody to join us for that. Again, you can join via Save the Dunes Facebook Live page or Zoom. You can get the Zoom link from Em, that's E-M standing for Emily, at savedunes.org. I hope you'll take the opportunity to join us for this because it is very rare and special, as I said.
Are there any other reports from boards and commission at this time? There are none. Reports of special or select committees. Reports of special or select committees? Any reports of select or special committees? There are none. Reports from mayor or other city officers and departments.
Good evening, Council. Looks like you're going to have a pretty busy night, so I'm going to be as quick as possible. So I just want to give you our July 2025 run report. We had a total of 478 calls. 28 of those were fire. 347 were medical calls. The others were non-fire hazardous conditions with non-fire service calls, good intents, and false alarms. Narcan was used six times on those medical calls. And that gives us a total of year-to-date, 2,965 calls, which is 61 more calls than we had last year, or 2.1% increase. Anybody got any questions or concerns about any of that?
Any comments or questions from the council?
No.
None from the council?
All right.
None, Chief Taylor?
All right. Thank you. Have a good evening.
You as well. Are there any other reports from mayor or other city officers and departments? Any reports from the mayor or other city officers and departments? There are none. Madam Clerk, are there any petitions for this evening?
There are no petitions this evening.
Madam Clerk, are there any communications?
There was no communications received.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, for our first resolution on this evening by title only?
A resolution by title only. A resolution terminating the assessed value deduction tax abatement for failure of substantially comply with a statement of benefits for certain personal property owned by PHM Brand LLC with Michigan City, Indiana pursuant to IC 6-1, 1-12, 1-5.9. And this is introduced by Mr. Beatry.
Thank you. And does the sponsor have any comments at this time?
Yes, thank you. You may remember, I think it was the meeting before our last one, that we approved tax abatements for 2025. There were several on the list. When we did our due diligence, this company, PHM, was one of the companies that was pending. And due to our research, we discovered that they have not met their obligations under the tax abatement provisions. And in fact, they've actually left the community. And they had two abatements, one for property and one for equipment. So we need to terminate the agreement on the assessed valuation in the odd chance that they may return to the community. If they do, we don't have this as a live agreement. We want to make sure that they don't have an abatement in place. And then ask them if they do return to resubmit all their funding. So this is just pretty much a slam dump. We just need to remove it.
Okay. I will open this up for public comments. Please keep in mind that public comments are three minutes, and it is in regards to the resolution that is before you. Public comments are now open on this resolution. Are there any public comments on this resolution? No, ma'am. You're welcome. Last call for public comment on this resolution. There are no public comments. Public comments are now closed. Comments by the council?
Yes.
Councilman.
Quick comment that there's been misinformation regarding the tax abatements that have floated throughout the community as well, that when companies do not meet their obligations in the signed agreement, that we do not terminate. And here's an example of exactly when a company does not uphold their end of the bargain, that we do terminate their tax abatements and we move forward.
Thank you, Councilman Dabney. Councilman Preszbalinski.
Yeah, a question for Councilman Beatry. How many years, or is this the first year that PHM has not met their requirements? Is this the first year? Has it been two years, three years, or?
I don't have the tax abatement records in front of me right now, but, oh, but I do have Clarence Hulse. Clarence?
Good evening. Clarence Hulse, EDCMC Director and Madam Chair of Council. Councilman Preszbalinski. PHM came to Michigan City in November of 2020. They were asked for, they asked us for two tax abatements. They were supposed to create 50 jobs and invest $7 billion in a billing expansion. They did the expansion, which took them about two years, so they wouldn't have asked for an abatement for us until about 2023. When we asked for them to submit, they weren't ready to submit. 24, no submittal. We knocked on the doors, called, nobody returned calls, and then we discovered they had been bought up by somebody else. We spoke to the office in Denver and were told that business didn't pan out as they were supposed to. So decided to close shop and sell the property. So they never submitted for any tax credit, so there's no clawback.
Okay, thank you. Where is this located?
Off Highway 12, just behind Will McLean.
Are there any other comments for Mr. Hulse?
This is your term termination since I've been here, so the council does take this seriously. Every year, we follow up to make sure companies are meeting the obligations to the city. And so this is the third one you've done in the past 10 years, so.
Thank you, Mr. Hulse. May I entertain a motion on this resolution? Have a motion by Dr. Cora and a second by Councilwoman Lee. Madam Clerk on the vote, please.
Dr. Cora.
Aye.
Ms. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Maldonar.
Aye.
Mr. Nelson.
Aye.
Mr. Preszbalinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Beatry.
Aye.
Mr. Coulter.
Aye.
And Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
This resolution carries. Thank you. Madam Clerk, on our second resolution for this evening?
A resolution by title only. A resolution terminating the assessed value deduction tax abatement for failure to substantially comply with a statement of benefits for certain real property owned by PHM Brands LLC within Michigan City, Indiana pursuant to IC 6-1, 1-12, 1-5.9. And this is also introduced by Mr. Beatry.
Does the sponsor have any comment?
Just to say what I said a couple minutes ago, this is the companion resolution to the one we just approved. One was for property, one was for equipment. This is the second one.
Okay. I will open this up for public comment. Public comment is now open on this resolution. Any public comments on this resolution? Public comments on this resolution? Are there any public comments on this resolution? There are none. Public comments are now closed. Comments by the council? Are there any comments from the council? Any comments from the council?
Motion to approve?
We have a motion by Mr. Beatry and a second by Councilman Dabney. Madam Clerk on the vote, please.
Ms. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Maldonar.
Aye.
Mr. Nelson.
Aye.
Mr. Preszbalinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Beatry.
Aye.
Ms. Coulter.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
And Dr. Cora.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
This resolution has passed. Thank you. Madam Clerk, our third resolution?
This is Resolution Number 4960 that was adopted on June 3rd. A declaratory resolution designating a certain area of the City of Michigan City, Indiana, be designated as Cooper Economic Revitalization Area to which dedication deductions from assessed value may be requested by an applicant to common counsel of the City of Michigan City pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1, 1-12.1. And this is also introduced by Mr. Beatry.
Are there any comments from the sponsor on this resolution?
This, we did approve this on June 3rd. This is the declaratory resolution that we approved. In order to go into effect, there has to be a public hearing on this second meeting where the affirmatory resolution needs to be approved. So we're here tonight for the affirmative resolution. And prior to that, or as a part of that, there needs to be a public hearing.
Thank you. The formal public hearing will be held August 4th, 2025, which was advertised in the Herald of Argus, July 24, 2025. Public hearing on this resolution is now opened. Are there any public comments on this resolution? This, this, ma'am, this is still not it. No, ma'am. I see. No, no problem. Are there any other? Are there any public comments on this resolution?
Paul Preszbalinski, 1716 Washington Street. I'm wondering why you didn't have a public hearing when you had this on the table the first time? Because you already passed it. So now it's after the fact in my book. But I do have a problem with this declaration of 40 years of tax abatement for this data center. This resolution is about the data center. And how much does anybody have or know? How much at the end that this is going to be in the negative to the city? Because they already have tax credits from the state. But at the end of the 40 years, how much money are we going to be out? Because everybody's always crying that we don't have a lot of money. And this, from what I heard, I want to know, and somebody needs to answer this. It started out at 800,000. Now it's up to somewhere in the neighborhood of 800 million? So what is the real number? I want to know the real number. You know, let me tell the public also that they had an executive session and they all, they all filled out nondisclosure statements, all right? So I want everybody to know that, and I haven't got them yet. But I filed a Freedom of Information Act with the city attorney's office, and I have not received that yet. So I want to say this. You are elected to represent us. There needs to be transparency. There's been no transparency with this whole operation. And I, and I'm not blaming any of the attorneys. I am blaming the city council president for not making this more public. Thank you.
If I could also, as far as public comment, have Mr. York to come up to elaborate on this further, please?
Good afternoon. Skylar York, Director of Redevelopment. So the ERA is establishing an economic revitalization area. Every year, every two years, we establish the whole city as an ERA. We do that every two years. We come back to you guys and establish it as so we can give tax abatements anywhere in the city. Basically, we can do projects anywhere in the city. This ERA is very specific to this project, which is the Phoenix Project that we're talking about. The reason why the resolution has passed prior to, it's not passed. It's the resolution you have to pass sets, it's a declaratory resolution. That's what sets the public hearing in motion, essentially. It sets everything in motion. So now you have to do a confirmatory resolution to set, to actually put the ERA in place. So that's what's before you tonight is the first resolution sets the public hearing. And then your public hearing is right now. And then your confirmatory resolution, if you so pass that, would be tonight. And that's how it affects it. This resolution, the reason for the new ERA, if you will, would be to grant the tax abatement for the longer than a two-year period. It's basically a 40-year resolution, essentially, a 40-year ERA. Does that clarify what exactly is on the ERA?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Skylar, before you go, I think, I think it's important to know too that, in a technical sense, this is for Phoenix Industries, which is the developer, the owner, and the developer of that property. And it spent money, and will spend more, to make it available for a company to use again.
Correct. It could be used for this project or any other project in the future, should this project not go forward. The ERA is set in place, and it would grant that. You are correct.
Right. But I want to make it clear to the public, this is Phoenix Industries that we're doing this for, the developer, not a client.
Correct. I do believe I'm correct on that.
Councilman Dabney, Mr. York?
Mr. York. I know we're a little bit early, and the resident here talks about the incentives and that they don't be paid into the city. And that's probably where you would address the amount of the tax abatement.
I would probably have some other folks who are much smarter than me talk about those things. But absolutely.
And we'll get to that, because I do want them to announce the amount of the tax abatement, because it was.
Yeah, this, this tool allows you to do that. It's just a tool that allows you to do it. It isn't actually the abatement. It is the tool that allows it. ERA, the Economic Revitalization Area, is the tool that allows us to grant abatements. It allows us to create TIFs. It allows us to do a lot of different things. It is the enabling legislation that you have to pass first.
So basically, it is our tools that are allowed by the state in order for us to do economic development.
You are absolutely correct. 100%.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll stay here in case there's just one other. Joe, I see you going.
Thank you, Mr. York. Ma'am, I will go ahead. Yes, ma'am. If you could state your name and your address and your, your, your comment is three minutes. Yes, ma'am.
Is that starting now?
Yes, ma'am. Once you're on the mic.
Somebody keep me my three minutes. Good evening, guys. I'm going to ask you some questions, but I don't need you to answer them because I only have three minutes.
Okay.
But what I.
Before, before.
My name is Michelle Duck.
Yes, if you could state your name and your address.
Michelle Duck.
And these are comments, and not for Q and A, but if you have questions.
Okay. No, your city has questions. I'm just here representing them because nobody else.
But if they do, and you have questions, you can also submit those to the city clerk.
Okay.
And then we will be able to provide you with the response to those questions.
I appreciate your help.
Thank you.
I will ask a few of them here tonight, though, but please hold your answers. I just want to start by saying that if you were a little bit more transparent, maybe this meeting would have gone a little bit faster for you. And the city doesn't appreciate people signing in DA's and keeping secrets when things are changing in our town. And Greg, I have a question. You were on the news the other day, and you said that what happened in New Carlisle with their data center doesn't apply to us. The city wants to know why, but you can answer them later. Also, they said that, you said on the news that it was going to bring our taxes down, but you didn't take any time to elaborate why or how. I'm sorry. I lost my voice. I've been on vacation. Lucky me. Sorry about that. Okay, so we'd like to know how those taxes are going to come down. We'd also like to know what's different between here and New Carlisle. It's very important to your people. We don't see any real new jobs coming. We see people building a building. We see a data center coming in that provides nothing for us. So your people would like to know exactly what these things are going to provide for us, except just seeing what it's going to be taking from us. And you know, I know I don't have a lot of time here, and there's a lot of lovely people that have a lot of questions. But since I have the mic, I'd like to mention the fact that the mayor today said that the community, or the people, that have to make things change. If we don't want things happening in our town, like data centers and gunshots at the police station, the community needs to get involved, and we're the ones that need to make the change. But I'm here to remind you that you guys work for us, and we pay your salaries, all of you. Yeah. When I was 16 years old, you gave me my first pap smear. You were the high school, you're my high school principal. Yeah, you've been in the city for a long time, but there's some bad things happening in the streets. Dabney, how long you been working for the city? You're the change I want to see in my community. Thank you very much.
Ma'am, if you could, please, when you state your name, we also need your address.
Michelle Duck. I live at 4933 Meadow Boulevard in Michigan City, Indiana, and I was established here in 1983.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Absolutely.
On this resolution?
Hello, everybody. My name is Sergeant Anthony Edward Lewis, United States Army Infantry, retired and prior service Marine. Former resident of Michigan City. I'm sure a few of you even recognize my face. Currently, I live at 1501 Lake Superior in Valparaiso. I rise today on this occasion to remind all of you of your duty. I know that you have been successful in finding your way into these seats. And in my experience, that means three things. You know the numbers, you know the law, and you know the community. I know that each and every last one of you is a product of this community, and that means something personal to you. I especially know that about Mr. Dabney and Dr. Cora. I know that I would be willing to give you credit for knowing this much. This is a scheme. We've seen meetings like this all over Northwest Indiana. They're trying to, private equity is trying to find weakness in municipal governments. And wherever it is they find it, that's where they're going to build this data center and destroy the entire region. You are accountable. You are responsible. And if you allow this travesty to take place here, you will be remembered, and not in a good way. Because if this data center gets built, none of us in this room will live long enough to be able to see the end of the disaster. You have a chance and opportunity to say to big money, not on our watch. And we're watching you to make sure that you do exactly that.
Thank you.
Good evening. State Representative Pat Boy.
Good evening.
218 Southwood Drive, Michigan City. I sent you guys all a list of questions. I don't know if you've all seen them yet. But I'm just going to read the questions and hope you have some time to answer some of them. Are union workers doing the majority of the renovation? How many full-time employees will work there when the data center goes in, when it's fully operational? What skills will they need? Will these be high-paying jobs? How many tax breaks and credits will the center receive? How will the city and its residents benefit from this facility? Will the data center be supplying its own electricity? We understand it will require a lot of energy. If not, how much can we expect our electric bills to go up yet again if NIPSCO needs to add additional equipment to ensure an adequate supply? Will the, will the potential increase for NIPSCO in question seven be borne by current users before they are operational? And will they pay the same rates as residential users or commercial rates, which are much lower? What is the water used for, and where will it come from? City water, direct from Lake Michigan, groundwater? Do they have a plan to filter and cool any water that's touched chemicals or been treated? Where will they send the water after its use? Those are my questions. I hope somebody can address them sooner or later. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on this resolution? Public comment on this resolution?
I have a public comment. Amy Weiser, 305 DuPage. So I was listening on Facebook Live on my drive over here. I wasn't aware that this was happening tonight, like a lot of people. So I was listening on Facebook Live on my drive over here. I wasn't aware that this was happening tonight, like a lot of people. And some of you that are really dialed into what's happening in the city could say something like, oh, well, you need to pay attention to what's going on. People aren't really dialed in. Folks are trying to figure out how to pay that NIPSco hike that doubled some of our electric bills last month already. So now we've got a project before us looking for a tax break. And you say it's not going to the evil data center. It's going to a developer. Do you think that data center is going to come on there if you don't give that break? Doubtful. So when it's sucking up all that electricity, all of our water, putting sounds and noises and pollutants and things back in the community, taking up by the square foot tragedy, not providing jobs and masks that people in this city need to get by? How much is that going to raise other bills for us when they drive on our roads to this thing? We're not going to be working there. Who are they going to bring into work there? We don't know. But the thing is, people not knowing that this meeting coming up is an intentional choice. They have been dancing around the state trying to find somewhere to dump things like this. Our city is not it. We don't want it here. And while some of you can sit up there and think, I'm here to represent the best interests of the city as I view them, someone that's totally in the know, that has all these different moving pieces, you're actually up there to represent the interests of the citizens voting with what we want, not what you think would be best for us. So listen to folks and what they're saying. I have yet to see two people say they want this that don't have something deeply connected into the institution of government or being rich. So do the people want it? Okay.
Thank you. Last call for public comment on this resolution. I'll take one other.
Good evening, council members. Andy Ski at Markless Electric, 203 East Harrison Street, Michigan City, Indiana. I obviously respect the, uh, the remonstrators tonight here for the growth in data center. But as another side of that story, um, I am here in support of the data center. So, uh, for local businesses such of our, such as ours, we've been in town since 1930. Um, you know, there's been numerous businesses in Michigan City over the years that were privately owned, locally owned, that have sold out to big corporation for whatever reason. Um, we're not one of those. We've been in Michigan City for 95 years. We're looking to stay in Michigan City. We're looking to grow in Michigan City and expand our business and expand our trades. We need opportunities such as this to do this along with the fellow union members. Um, we're currently out there working with members from IBW 531, Carpenter's Local 1485. Um, we have masons coming tomorrow. The plumbers are coming tomorrow also on site, the union plumbers. Um, so for us, it's, it's great. And not only in the immediate future, is it, is it great for our business? I mean, right there on Harrison Street, we've been showing up since 1930, looking to do projects like this. But the other side is, I remember maybe 30 years ago-ish, I'm 47, when Blue Chip came to town. There was a lot of opposition to the casino. And looking back, if we didn't have the casino now and we didn't get the money from that casino, where would we be? We're going to lose the prison. We might lose the generating station. What growth do we want? I was at the workshop. I didn't write it down, but off memory, I believe it was the city gets 39 years of, of funding from this. So with, with the businesses we are losing, we need business, you know? And I can't speak on behalf of NIPSco, just simple economics. If you don't have industry, those are the big NIPSco payers. Those are the big rate payers. Those are the big power users. If all the industry leaves and our population doesn't change, NIPSco's overhead doesn't go down. NIPSco has the same amount of linemen, the same amount of trucks, the same amount of overhead. And our residential bills are on a much smaller scale. So if they're only making money off our residential bills and their overhead doesn't change, I would only assume that the rates would go up more than they already have. So I think you need big users. You need big business, whether it's the casino or industry or avenues such as this to put money and opportunity back into our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe there was, this was my last call. The young gentleman, um, I believe got up before the gentleman that's at the mic, if you or no.
Standing up his whole time.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just saw them standing right there.
No, it's all.
After the young gentleman, after the gentleman speaking, the young gentleman that's standing there with the sign wants to speak, then public comments, then public comments will be closed.
Did you invite us here to give our opinions?
Okay.
Point of order. Point of order, Madam President.
Counselor.
In, in all fairness, I mean, this is a pub, it's a public hearing. It's a public meeting. We invited the public to come. This is public comment. If we need to, and I understand that you have, you know, you run the meetings. But you know, I don't know how the other council members feel about it. But this here is a hot topic, right? In the community, it's been a hot topic for a month and a half. And I think in all fairness to the community members that came here, they should have the opportunity to get up and speak.
Councilman Dabney.
Yes, I have a, a, a response to that. So there's four or five different, uh, resolutions regarding this. Are we going to allow them to come up and speak, the same people to come up and speak on every single ordinance? If it takes all, if it takes all night?
Okay. And again, and with all due respect, we will continue to conduct this in a decent and in a fashionable way. And I understand that this is a public hearing. Public hearings, again, is three minutes. Sir, if you would, please state your name and your address.
Yep. Uh, my name is Stephen Kornacki at 5410 Rogowski Avenue, Michigan City, Indiana. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I read through the FAQs and while it's written to sound reassuring, a lot of it is vague with words that may or can increase or have shown. Um, that's marketing, that's commenting, uh, just like Mr. York saying that this is just to approve for the, uh, rezoning, that anything can go in there. We all see the plans of what is being planned on going in there. Uh, they say the data center won't increase utility rates, but the power study with NIPSco isn't even done yet. Uh, how can they guarantee that, especially when, uh, we've already seen rate hikes and another, in another, or in the future? And if this project doubles in size like they're planning, how is, uh, the additional power used being accounted for? So the council and developer are speaking on behalf of NIPSco that rates will not increase. If more power is being consumed in Northern Indiana with all the data centers. There's also claims that this will offset, uh, the loss of Indiana State Prison's water use. But let's be honest, where the prisoners running their water 24/7, um, that's not a fair comparison. Um, another bullet point that caught my eye is they're promising 30 permanent jobs. But say each one supports six more, uh, where Panda Express, Meyer, Discount Tire, that's not economic boom, um, that is being pitched. Uh, then there's 39-year timeline. Let's think back what tech looked like back in 1986. Cell phones were the size of backpacks and internet was not existing. In 69 years, we went from a one-ton, five-megabyte hard drive to smartphones in our pockets with a terabyte of storage. Uh, what if the data center becomes obsolete in 10 to 15 years? What's the plan then? Let it rust and seep into our water? A company going bankrupt will not pay to remove all that equipment. It also mentions Michigan City becoming a smart city. That might sound good, but for a lot of people, that means more surveillance, more data collection and less privacy. This deserves more conversation. Um, here's a better idea. If there's going to be gifts that are generated, let's skip giving it to the EDC MC and instead set up a local fund to help Michigan City primary residents make their houses more efficient, skip the bureaucracy. That's a real investment in the people who already live here. The $1 million gift to the EDC MC sounds more like a quite bailout to cover items like $100,000 irrigation repair bill at the city golf course or the destruction of a water fountain that was paid by the residents with previous tax money. If you are serious about community benefit, that money should go towards people who need it most, not patching the budget shortfalls behind closed doors. I'm not against the development, but I'm against shady government using a marketing language without long-term planning or community involvement. This property was pitched, or this property was purchased January 2023, but yet a data center plan is the talk of the town recently. Come on, what investment firm buys a property without consulting a city about the intended, uh, use prior to the purchase?
Thank, sir. I'm sorry, but your three minutes.
I don't believe that. Let's make, uh, this work for Michigan City residents. Not behind them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to assume that you'd like me to give my name and address instead of my 10-year-old son. Uh, my name is Kate McIntosh. I live at 309 Cloud Street. This is my son Bodhi. He, uh, let me know he wanted to speak, so here we are.
Um, the data, the data center will destroy Michigan City.
Are there any other public comment?
Yeah, there's quite a line. Can you guys all hear me? I am, uh, I'm Glenn Pludoo. I live at 102 Belmont Court. I'm, I'm doing this off the cuff. I did not expect to come here and give a statement. Um, and I'm against this data center, uh, for reasons that I won't, like other people have said, which I don't need to rehash here. But, um, I just think like the whole proposition just, for the good of Michigan City, doesn't make sense. The location doesn't make sense. This is going to be used presumably for AI, machine learning stuff, right? That's the hot thing right now. That's why they're building the data centers in New Carlyle, at least in part. And like, okay, we live in a capitalist country, right? Uh, why are we giving them tax breaks? We should just like, uh, they're, they, they promised this $26 million over 30 years or whatever an investment, but like for the profit that they'll make, that's a drop in the bucket. And, and like, we don't need them to provide that investment money because we can just tax them, right? That's our mechanism of redistribution. You know, people have said stuff like, uh, we're only going to have 30 permanent jobs and that's true. I mean, give or take a few, uh, data centers don't require a lot of people to run them. But also the number of construction workers, electricians, uh, tradespeople, I think that's overblown. One of my best friends is an electrician at the New Carlyle data center building site. And he said, a big majority of the people there are traveling tradespeople. So the highest paid people at that job site are not from our community. They'll go back, you know, some other state across the country and that money never makes it back here. You know, except for the two years or whatever that they're going to build this. So, you know, if we want to invest in technology, that's pretty sensible. But like, we need to have, uh, a bigger grand strategy about industrial policy. And we can't be building stuff like this in the middle of where people live, maybe out. I mean, Indiana is a big state, right? We could do this somewhere else. So, uh, thanks.
Good evening, council. Larry Levandowski, um, uh, General Manager for La Porte County Project Management, 203 East Harrison Street. I just want to, I'm 60 years old, been part of this community for six years, worked in this community for 60 years. You know, I, once I turned 18, got right into the trades. I'm a member of Local 1485. The majority of all my work has been in Michigan City. I worked on the, on Blue Chip. I worked at the Lighthouse Mall. Today we set, set foot on the data center property, started work there. What I see is growth. It's growth. I saw growth when Lighthouse Mall came. It was, it was Pullman. I watched Pullman burn. I saw that the growth when Lighthouse Mall came. Look, it flourished. I watched Blue Chip go. It's, it's flourishing still. This is just another thing that in time can flourish and bring a lot more to this community.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kenzo Cinski. I live at 104 Mayfield Drive, Michigan City, right down the road from the proposed data center. Um, I am asking you to delay any votes from this meeting on the data center. The Cooper, Cooper era was read without a hearing held at the meeting on June 3rd, so there is time. Why is this being rushed as the community is just now finding out details? This phrase is still included in a resolution, resolution and gives all power to the end user. Upon the development site, to include without limitation, one or more data center buildings as well as certain other building structures and infrastructure that are necessary in support of the foregoing use, end quote. Upon follow-up restore, research from conversations with some of you, was another option presented or still available with this site in the developer? A statement confirmed that the city had or may still have another option on the table from this developer. You may not be hearing from the community because so many feel that this is already a done deal, especially considering the energy in the room tonight. The need for NDAs is also a false narrative that is being pushed. Are NDAs a common part of the process here and in other cities? Yes. But could you have also taken another path forward? Also yes, as exemplified by Porter County, who recently worked without them. You could have even delayed entering the NDAs to allow more openness with the community to metro support. Per city policy, M1 zoning cannot adversely affect neighboring districts. Our health in Ward 6 and beyond is being put at risk. Low frequency sound, the sound that travels two to three miles cannot be buffered away and puts a constant stress on the surrounding homes can cause adverse health effects such as high blood pressure that can lead to heart attacks, increased anxiety, cognitive decline and sleep deprivation. Our property values most likely will suffer, the air quality will be affected and power surges could ensue. The neighboring schools will be dealing with the same concerns. Many articles have talked about increased value as it will bring jobs, as it's already been mentioned here tonight. But 30 jobs is not a big boom at all. Zoning should be reviewed to consider if M2 would be a better fit for this industry and our city or just the area in general. Regarding zoning, it's also unacceptable. The city of La Porte is where we had to go to find our documents. Again, why do you not want these resources easily accessible for the public? The MC workshop on the 24th was not properly made public. It seems you just had to hold a workshop with the goal of shutting the community out, but at least you can say it was held. Councilman Nelson, thank you for giving a few hours notice with your post. I do question per open door law if proper effort was made by the board for this workshop. Have experts on the opposing side have been given a chance to speak about their information regarding all of this? Again, I'm just asking for delay and to do this the right way with the community truly letting you know how they feel and maybe even exploring other options. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ashley Williams, 402 First Street and Ward 1. Tonight I want to ask you a few questions to start out. What is your health worth? What about that of your neighbors? What is the worth of the future of our city? Will it belong to your children or be handed off behind closed doors? You're facing a decision that could reshape the future of Michigan City for generations. I urge you to table not just this resolution, but every single subsequent resolution with Phoenix indefinitely and give this community an honest and transparent process. For God's sake, it is what they deserve. It's what each of us deserve and it's what we're crying out for. This rushed agenda is counter to the values of our community. We didn't learn about the data center from city officials. We learned about it from a residence video. Uh, that came, then came the word of the negotiations were off with the data center and construction continued. A workshop was held with little notice with the ward's own councilwoman unable to be present. Today, we only received amended resolutions just two hours before this meeting. This is not public transparency. Phoenix Investors is the developer. The end user listed in the resolutions is Lavender Fields Holdings. This is a shell corporation. This is a fake name. We still don't even know who is operating this facility. If any other project of this massive scale came before you with a phony name, you would shut it down out of principle, right? And let's look at who Phoenix does business with. Elon Musk is leasing Phoenix-owned supercomputer site in Memphis. A monstrosity of a data center which has overrun the community, polluted the community and runs dozens of polluting gas turbines 24/7 without permits. This is devastating and wreaking havoc on communities nearby. That facility is still in operation. This is who you would be doing business with. Is that right? Shame on them. In Michigan City, the data center would use diesel backup generation, generators known to increase cancer and other risks. They may exceed local noise limits with citing just 900 feet from homes and 2,000 feet from schools. Electrical surges and, and fires are another concern. And the company will self-regulate and report its own pollution data. This is a direct threat to our children's lungs, our neighborhood safety and the soul of our very city. Phoenix is promising 832 million in investment and all these deals on a silver platter. This is a drop in the bucket for these companies who will receive 50 years of sales tax exemptions. That includes utilities and equipment and so much more. That's millions in, and millions of dollars in local revenue loss for us. While our residents are struggling to be able to afford their basic needs, violence is erupting in our streets and people are homeless. This is where our hearts. This is where our hearts and our minds and our votes should be at. Not with this data center. We don't need it. We don't want it.
Ma'am, your allotted time has passed.
Okay, well, I'm just gonna say, Phoenix may own the land, but you hold the power. Do the right thing tonight. The time is always right.
Thank you. Michael Seiwitz, 25 Jamestown Drive, Michigan City, Indiana, 6th Ward, where this particular parcel is. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak on this, um, to support this proposal. I have on numerous occasions toured this derelict and abandoned industrial building and in our efforts to find a suitable user. On all occasions, the cost of repairing, retrofitting nearly 400,000 square feet was significantly prohibitive. This asset is considered functionally obsolescent primarily because of neglect, its fragmented floor plan, its limited clear ceiling heights of less than 16 feet, and the case of environmental concerns left behind by the previous user. This nearly 70-acre parcel is bracketed by rail lines in the south as well as on the west. A Michigan City sanitary easement forms the northern border of this site, with industrial users, diamond manufacturing, Midwest wheel coders to the north, and a NIPSco substation directly to the east across from Royal Road. In considering the intended use, please consider that many industrial users produce noxious odors, particulate gases, and some other toxic residue. This use does not. Many industrial uses produce traffic concerns with large, heavy trucks that accelerate wear and tear on our city roads. This use does not. Our modern society as a whole needs reliable data management that is redundant, scalable, and secure. This requirement calls for a large capital expenditures and operating expenses. This proposal provides impetus to make Michigan City a participant in this growing field while yielding gain for both parties. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. One moment, Mr. Kalavi. The lady was up at the mic.
Uh, my name is Kelly Losinski, 104 Mayfield Drive. Um, simply put, data centers are not light industry. They have no business in the residential areas in our city. First and foremost is the health of the residents of Michigan City. So many people think it's just a Ward 6 problem and they won't be affected when they can't, that can't be further from the truth. The air quality for all of us in the city and county and surrounding counties will be affected. A few of the proven adverse effects are cancer, respiratory illnesses, high blood pressure, heart attack, lack of sleep, anxiety. To anyone who says they haven't seen these reports or you simply refuse to look at them and believe them as facts, because I've been told that by some of you, uh, it's being reported nationwide. These health ailments come from the low-frequency noise and air quality. For noise, we were told, the company would self-regulate. I don't think I need to state why that's a problem. We were sure that all EPA guidance would be used for regulations. That would be great if it's not being gutted federally with a press conference that was held in our own state capitol five days ago. As a council, you can put your own guidelines in. At the very least, that should be done and this should be delayed until you do that. We need business and power, et cetera, but not at the risk of our health. Second, electric and water. We've already seen these increases take place. I'm sure they will get worse. And the workshop slides said my bills won't go up. When they do, who do I send the bill to? I was told we don't have water shortages or power shortages. Again, a little research shows this isn't true. I look at the lived experiences of people around the country versus what the big companies telling me so they get what they want. News outlets across the country are covering this. If you actually take the time to look, our own governor just said Indiana currently doesn't have the power needed for all the centers being put up and that it needs to be addressed with nuclear power. Don't get me going there. That will take years. So what happens in the meantime? There are reports these centers will use more power than the population of the entire states they reside in. Indiana is one of those states. Too little power isn't the only issue. Have any of you looked what can happen to nearby homes? If there's a power surge, potential home fires. Lastly, the city was not properly notified. Transparency has been a key here all night. Two weeks' notice and an article in the Herald Argus that we don't see isn't giving us notice. People started questioning what was going on and construction started. A statement was put out by the city and mayor that it wasn't a data center. That was clearly a lie, although we heard today it could still be something else. I pray to God you take that route. We've heard nothing could be said due to NDAs. Signing these were your choice. As previously stated, Porter County did not do that on three of their four projects. The workshop that was presented was given on such little notice, the public, it was laughable. I learned the same day. Now there's a rush tonight. People have hardly been able to do their research and report how they feel. We've spoken to people on our street today. They didn't have time to be here or you'd have even more. Uh, the public and possibly you don't even know who's even running the data center. This makes a difference. Some centers are actually better than others. Some of you have lectured us about how this is such a great deal. Have you done research to what other cities are getting? Because you guys are getting nothing compared to them. And the amount of money the data centers actually bring in.
Thank you, ma'am. Here, Mr. Kalavi.
Uh, this is Tommy Kalavich from 1316 Ohio Street. I'd like to just let you know, you know, when, when, when Anco was there, I worked there for 18 years. We actually, this place has a history of environmental issues. When we worked there, we treated the rubber windshield wiper with deadly chlorine gas. This is a chemical that was, this process was banned in most European countries because, you know, decades ago, this chlorine was used to kill millions and millions of people. Nobody wanted to go there because of all the environment concerns in the back. It lacked dock space. It lacked ceiling height. It like, uh, I think these data centers, you're supposed to have a 25 acres, 25 acres. It's only 16 acres. Uh, this, this is just not the right fit for Michigan City. You kept out, you kept, all your previous councils, you kept on granting a tax abatement, all these other companies, up until the day they all pulled out. They pulled out, they, they ended up leaving for Juarez. We, we don't want any more history to repeat itself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dominic Yankee, 904 Willow Spring Drive.
If you can speak up to the mic just a little bit.
Dominic Yankee, 904 Willow Spring Drive. So, I have environmental concerns about this, including air quality and noise pollution. I have asthma and there's been days where I haven't been able to leave my house because the air quality's been so bad and this is only gonna make things worse. Economic concerns, this is, this project is going to drain our city. This will be like how cities fight to host the Olympics. They believe that hosting the Olympics will lead to economic benefits. While in reality, it leads to cities going bankrupt and ecological disaster. Electric use, if this company pays commercial rates instead of residential rates and if new NIPSco electric infrastructure is required for this project, the taxpayers, the residents, will be helping to pay the data center's electricity bill. Why is a country and as a society, do we only socialize for corporations and not individuals who are truly in need? A tax abatement for this would serve to help the corporation at our expense. That's all.
Thank you.
Angie Hensman, 237 Leo Avenue in Trow Creek. I want to say, you guys are in the same position that so many municipalities, especially in Indiana, are in right now. And the reason for that is because our state and our governor decided to give tax breaks and, and make you guys lose all this money for the things we need for our community. So we understand, we need to find revenue. But then at what cost? At what cost is this revenue? Um, data centers are popping up everywhere. This is an issue. This is a fight that's happening. And we will literally be fighting for our natural resources. This is, this is us versus these big companies and our resources. This is everyone saying, we have, we have concerns about the environmental impact. Have we done enough studies to see what that environmental impact will be on our community? I don't think so. I don't think any of us do. Have, have we done any studies? I mean, we talk about economic booms, but like, we usually don't give economic, like, rebates and things and tax abatements unless we know they're gonna hire people, right? And we're gonna get, what, 20 jobs out of this full-time? Also, someone said that we were using union. However, the unions were out saying that they weren't. So I don't know what's going on there. All I'm saying is that I know we're in a tough situation. We gotta find ways to make revenue because otherwise our schools, our police stations, our libraries, all of it, all of it goes away, right? Because the state is taking that money from us. But I don't think this is the answer.
Thank you.
Don Briggs at 300 Madison Street, Michigan City. I went to the similar meeting of the county commissioners recently. Commissioner Grammerosa introduced the discussion to the topic of a data center down in, in, uh, down south in, in the county near Kingsford Heights and in the, uh, Kingsbury Ordnance Plant. She introduced the discussion with mention of SB 1. The follow-up on what Angie Hensman has said, yes, we're facing a big slice of funding. So I think we're talking about the wrong thing here. Shouldn't we get the funding back at the state level? We can't do that in a city meeting, but we can do it in other ways. It would be great if the, the city council could just postpone this thing or kill it entirely until we can resolve SB 1.
Thank you.
By the way, by the way, um, over in Chicago, we've seen many sporadic rate increases for, uh, utilities for, for, for electrical power. We, we should expect the same thing here and this is a hidden and imponderable cost on the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, hello, council members. My name is T. Kuntz. Uh, my wife and I only just moved to Michigan City from Whiting, Indiana, February this year. I very quickly come to love this city and I've considered myself privileged to live here. However, it is plain to me that our municipalities share responsibility for the crash course into an increasingly likely climate catastrophe is not being adequately carried. Allowing a data center to be built here at all betrays the people of this city in every way. Data centers are resource gluttons. It takes 100 megawatts of power to, to, eh, eh, sorry, 100 megawatts of power to power a data center, which is enough energy to power 80,000 homes and consumes between 18K and 550K gallons of water per day or 6.5 million to 200 million gallons a year. NIPSco has already hyped up the price of residents' electric bills during a recession and a cost of living crisis. The amount of energy needed to operate a data center will drive up demand for electricity and NIPSco will continue to increase the price. As demand for AI-integrated software increases, so too does the demand for energy and the price will continue to rise. Your NDA partner will likely refer to this as a cost of doing business or they'll likely receive a tax break if they reach their desired profit margin, while the rest of us will have to decide between rent, food, and lights. It is a betrayal of Michigan City's working class. Besides having to choose between basic necessities to stay in shelter, data centers are primarily run by themselves and may require less than 30 people to maintain them. Meanwhile, AI, which heavily relies on these data centers, is projected to replace up to 2 million jobs in our manufacturing sectors this year, 2025, according to a report by MIT. And according to a report by the World Economic Forum, up to 92 million jobs will be replaced worldwide by 2030. As the demand for human labor goes down, so too will the wages to supply it. According to a study titled Automation, Artificial Intelligence, and Job Displacement in the U.S., the increase in demand for AI that began during the pandemic negatively impacted the employment status of non-specialized American workers in 2022 or jobs that require routine tasks. They also found that automation and AI disproportionately affects job held, jobs held by low-wage workers, especially Black, Hispanic, and Latino workers. Therefore, this city stepping aside to allow this market to expand will further strengthen structural inequalities in our labor market. If you care about this city, you will act to prevent this industry of disenfranchising from taking hold on the region.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. That, excuse me. Um, that is all for public comment at this time, so public comments are now closed. Comments from the council? Councilman Nelson?
Um, can I make a motion to table indefinitely?
There is a motion on the table to table this indefinitely. Is there a second?
I second.
There is a second by, a motion by Councilman Nelson, a second by Councilwoman Maldenhour. Madam Clerk, on the vote, please.
Ms. Maldenhour?
Ma'am, uh, President. You know, we have discussed this, we have discussed this resolution, but there was supposed to be a presentation about the data center, but that has not happened.
We see.
There, there was a presentation and we do have the developers that are here.
At, at least before we vote on anything, I, 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 I think we need to at least listen.
Can't, can't.
We can't due to that there is a motion on the table. Madam Clerk, on the vote, please.
Ms. Maldenhour?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Pris Walensky?
Nay.
Ms. Tillman?
Nay.
Mr. Beatry?
Nay.
Mr. Coulter?
Nay.
Mr. Dabney?
Nay.
Dr. Cora?
Nay.
And Ms. Lee?
Aye.
We have two in favor and seven opposed.
Three.
Three, sorry.
Madam Clerk, that's three in favor. So the motion to, uh, table this indefinitely did not pass. So moving forward, may I entertain a motion on this resolution?
Madam President, point order. Does the council get a chance to, uh, discuss the resolution and our viewpoints on it?
Opened it up and then there was a motion for council comments.
Okay, well, the motion was defeated, so all I'm asking for is to continue on with council comments if we have some comments to make.
That'd be fair.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Pris Walensky, have any comments at this time?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, I do. Thank you very much. Uh, I've listened and I've seen and I've read many of the comments, uh, that many of the citizens have posted and expressed their feelings here tonight. And I have some of that sentiment, but I also have sentiment looking at it from a business aspect. And let me just tell you where I've been, what I've learned about this whole new world of data centers. Because I knew a little bit of nothing about data centers a month and a half ago. But, uh, so then we've had an executive session. We've had a workshop, learned a lot in there. In fact, last week, Wednesday, the city council, uh, myself, uh, Councilwoman Daisy Lee, Councilwoman Coulter, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Tracy Tillman, and the mayor. We took a ride over to Hammond, to the data center over there, to see what the data center looks like, get some information about it, listen to this horrendous noise that is supposedly supposed to be coming out of, uh, the center. And when we, when we got there and we got in the front, in the driveway, right in front of the building, we didn't hear any noise. And we went through the building and of course, it's, uh, to me, it's a large warehouse with computers in it, which is basically a storage unit for all this information. And then the, the other companies rent out the, uh, storage space and then the information moves on. So, uh, did not see any environmental issues, no water pollution, anything like that. Uh, even our water superintendent. Ma'am.
Excuse me.
Ma'am.
Point of order, there will be no outburst in the chambers. Please finish, Councilman Pris Walensky.
Thank you, thank you. And, uh, so our water superintendent, and he hasn't had time to get up here and speak this evening, but, you know, we have plenty of capacity. There's not, this is non-contact cooling water, which if people don't know what that means, I'm sure a, a majority of you do, that the water never even comes in contact with the process or the computers or however that works. So there won't be any water pollution. There, there won't be any noise pollution. There won't be any air pollution.
That's...
Ma'am, please. So, but the, the one, in, in the city, the city out, out of this project would make, and then it was brought up, that yeah, the state, the state put us in this predicament with cutting- the state put us in this predicament with cutting property taxes in the state of Indiana, and now making the city make up that difference. So the loss to the city of Michigan City for the next year to two years is going to be $3 to $4 million. Now, if that's what, if, if, if we don't find any means of making that up, then the bottom line is you have to cut services. Okay? And, or people will just say, well, just tighten your belt. I've heard that a thousand times, being on the city council. You only have so much money to pay for what you have to get done. But my main concern here is, is with the NIPSCO, with the NIPSCO charge and the NIPSCO bill, is there going to be a increase in that? Because in what I've been told, there's another company, not NIPSCO, but there's another company that's going to be taking over this, uh, power source to these companies. Okay, yeah. All right. And, and what they have to do, they have to go to the IURC down in Indianapolis to get a rate, okay, to charge customers, and that rate will be coming back to residential customers. So if there's an increase, we will get the extra charge for the, uh, electricity. And to me, that's an uncertainty. And, and all my years being on the city council, I have, I have gone to the hearings in Hammond when rate increases have come up and spoke very strongly against rate increases for people, uh, in Michigan City. So without knowing that for sure, whether there's going to be an increase or there's not going to be an increase, I can't vote on that. Thank you, sir. Uh, so with that being said, with that uncertainty there, and some of the other uncertainties that are here, is I would like to mo, make a motion to table this, but not indefinitely, but for three or four months or to whenever, to whenever this company or the new company is going to go to the IURC to see if a rate increase is going to be involved with this. So I am making a motion that we table this, not indefinitely, but for four months and possibly hire a consultant to answer some of the questions that have come up here tonight. And, and other council members.
Second.
That's a motion.
There is a motion by Councilman Pris Walensky.
I had a, a comment I wanted to make, but.
But he put the motion out, I apologize. So there is a motion by Councilman Pris Walensky, there's a second by Councilwoman Lee to table this for four months and to, uh, uh, to hire a consultant. Madam Clerk, on the vote, please.
Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Pris Walensky?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Nay.
Mr. Beatty?
Nay.
Mr. Coulter?
Nay.
Mr. Dabney?
Nay.
Mr. Dr. Cora?
Nay.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Maldenhour? Ms. Maldenhour?
Aye.
We have four in favor and five opposed.
May I entertain a motion on this resolution?
Madam President?
Dr. Cora?
Yeah. You know, I, I would have supported the move to postpone it, but not by four months. I think we need to do a little bit of homework, we need to give some present, uh, more information about this. And as a matter of fact, I want to do some research myself on the health effects of this, because that has been brought up. But I really don't need four months for that. I would be open to the idea of postponing by a month. And as a matter of fact, I would request Mr. Hulse to give some tours, uh, for whoever is interested, citizens, to go to a data center and take a look at it. I, I think it, we need to approach newer technologies with an open mind. I understand the concerns that have been expressed, but at the same time, if we don't move forward um, with newer technologies, uh, and bringing new opportunities, then we'll fall behind as a community. But at the same time, postponing it by a month, taking a little more time, uh, trying to understand some of the impacts of this, uh, is a reasonable thing. So I make a motion that we postpone it by a month.
Second.
Well, man.
We have a motion on the table to postpone to table this for one month by Dr. Cora, and a second by Councilman Nelson. Madam Clerk, on the vote.
Mr. Pris Walensky?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Nay.
Mr. Beatty?
Nay.
Mr. Coulter?
Nay.
Mr. Dabney?
Nay.
Dr. Cora?
Aye.
Get a chance to speak.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Maldenhour?
Aye.
And Mr. Nelson?
Aye.
We have five in favor and four opposed. It'll be tabled for one month.
This resolution has been tabled for one month. Moving on to our next resolution, Madam Clerk.
I'm just going to bust in this.
Oh, I'm, I close that.
I'm just going to bust in and start commenting.
Yes, mhm, I did. Madam Clerk, on the next resolution?
Comment.
Resolution by title only, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Michigan City, Indiana, granting Phoenix Michigan City Investors LLC an assessed valuation deduction tax abatement for a vacant building deduction pursuant to Indiana Code 6-1, 1-12-1. And this is sent out by, uh, Ms. Tillman, Mr. Beatty, Dr. Cora, and Mr. Dabney.
Do any of the sponsors have any comments? Councilman Dabney?
Yes, um, and this is talking about, because we just, what we did with the last, uh, resolution, and these other resolutions pretty much follow. Um, and I was trying to get a chance to speak, uh, the last time around. Now, we're talking about tabling, and what we're going to do is try to get, uh, consultant and so forth and so forth. And I wanted to ask the question, are we able to do that? Can we send somebody down to, what's it called, the U, the IU, IURC in advance of us doing these things in order to, to get answers and have them tell us, are they going to increase rates? We haven't been able to, to stop them in the past when rates have been increased. We've sent attorneys down, a lobby on our behalf. And I, what I wanted to ask was, are we able to send somebody down in advance in order to be able to try to do that, to get a promise from an electric company, a private electric company, that they're going to not raise rates? Um, and, and that's what you're asking, that's what they're asking us to do. And, and so I wanted to know that answer before I gave a vote on that. Um, but like I said, I didn't get a chance to comment on that, we just took a vote. Um, so now eh, eh, what else do we need to have our, our people do as well? Is that going to continue to come up where, uh, something else is going to need to be looked at? Um, are we going to need to test rainwater, are we going to, whatever it may be? Um, do we have the capability of doing it? Um, that is, that's my concern. I, you know, I understand the concerns of, of the people here, um, especially with some of the things you read, uh, on that, that great news source of Facebook. I understand. Um, yeah, yeah, that great news source of Facebook. And I had, I had people actually call me and said they did not see any of the meetings on Facebook, um, when, when the, our clerk's office put out the actual notifications like they do with all of our council meetings, but people didn't see them because they weren't, and I was told this, so don't shoot the messenger, that they did not see it on Facebook. Um, so I just wanted to, to be able to answer, get the answers to those questions that while we're tabling, are we able to even perform these actions? Because if we're not able to perform these actions in a month, we'll come right back here. We'll have the same people holding the signs and, and screaming and hollering. But if we could not find a consultant to do such things, where does that put us? Those are the questions I wanted to have answered before we moved on.
Councilman Beatty?
Um, I've been listening to what everybody's saying and writing down things that I hadn't heard before. I only had one thing that I wrote down after everyone spoke up there, because it was something that I hadn't heard before. Now I've heard something, a second thing, and it kind of came from Councilman Pris Walensky. I never heard from anyone that another company was going to be involved in providing power. I thought it was NIPSCO that was providing power. And you're telling me it's not NIPSCO, it's going to be some other company that's going to go to IUR, IURC. So I guess my question is, you're, right now, you can tell us who, who told you, where you got the information. Because my big problem in this whole thing is the truth. You can't find the truth about anything in the world anymore, because you can go online and you can find a million people who'll tell you one thing, and a million people will tell you something else. When I was young, that wasn't true. You heard Huntley and Brinkley at night, and that was the truth. Everybody took it home with them. Now, I've already heard people say, well, this is going to happen, you're going to get cancer if you'll put this data center in. Well, I've done research too, I've done a lot of it, and I've tried to sort through all this stuff. And everything that I see says that, that these data centers do not cause cancer. They produce, uh, a EMFs, which is electromagnetic fields. It's non-ionizing, and it doesn't produce radiation. So you don't get cancer from these places. So, and, and if we went further, the stuff I'm seeing to say, there is nowhere where you can find scientific evidence that data centers create cancer. So you're going to tell me, oh, I've seen half a dozen of those. Well, what's the truth then? What I take is what I saw in that meeting when we had the exec session. And that's why there was an NDA, by the way. Because you do find out things in the, in the sessions with potential developers who are unwilling for reasons of finance to allow who they are, because if they announce who they are, automatically their prices for everything go up. So you do learn things in exec sessions that aren't available to the general public, and you sign an NDA that you won't disclose that to anyone else until this deal is done.
Excuse me.
I've got the, I've got the table now. So there's a reason for those NDAs. So I listened to everything that they said, I checked what they told me, and there's no noise pollution. You've already heard that. There's no water pollution, because it's a closed loop. The waters that are used to clean or cool, cool, and then they're not released back into the community at all. They don't end up in Trail Creek or anywhere. They're in the closed loop. Uh, and this power thing has got me confused. So Don, you and I are going to have to talk later, or you can see where you found this information. Because that is a factor for me, NIPSCO. But I heard from NIPSCO, and she's sitting right down there, that this was not going to impact rates for residential users. So that's why I voted in favor of this from day one. But if you want to wait for, you know, and the other thing, uh, I can guarantee you, Brian, you're going to be able to find an attorney or a lobbyist who will gra, gladly take your money and go down to Indianapolis and talk to IURC. And they'll come back with information that you'll be going, I don't want to get more than what I knew before. It's, it'll be, it'll be vague.
So I would like to have, um, Phoenix investors to come up and speak, please.
Thank you very much. That's what I was going to ask, because there are a lot of experts, let them at least give their presentation. And I think that'll help, Madam President.
And all, and, and also, in regards to comments and things of that nature, um, from that workshop that was held, the questions that was asked from the public, first of all, it was done within the timeframe allotted, which is 48 hours. Look up under Robert's rules. You want me to adhere to that? I abide by what the book and the ruling says. Second of all, for, um, the information being put out there publicly, I don't control that part. I'm not, I'm not the IT, and I'm not saying that it was IT. I'm just saying that it was properly submitted and file-stamped for the 21st. The meeting was on the 24th. Second of all, from that workshop, there was questions asked from the public, and those that were not able to be answered at that time, it was in detail from the investors. Everything was self-explanatory. There were some repeated questions. So we took those and did a Q and A. So your questions and concerns were answered, and they have been posted and put out there publicly. There is, there is transparency. That information is out there. So, and again, we have the, uh, Phoenix investors here to speak and to provide the information, um, to the question that was asked tonight, which was also addressed at the workshop. Thank you.
Hi, Council. Uh, John Paray with Phoenix Investors. Um, I won't go into too much about who we are, because we kind of went through that in the last workshop. But I was hoping that, uh, with, uh, kind of the questions and the comments that have been being stirred around, you know, during this, uh, common council meeting, if there's any specifics that we could clear things up. I know there's a lot, there's a lot of stigma out there of comparing this to other data centers, not understanding who the end user is, which is, you know, a privacy thing on their aspect. But, um, if there is any questions that I wanted to cover, I know we could talk about the NIPSCO side of things and the water usage, but I'd like to clear the air a little bit. I know that some of you weren't there, uh, for the last meeting. So if there were some specific questions that, uh, you know, I would, I would love to respond, um, to you and, and good.
Madam President, can I, can I make a suggestion to Mr. Paray? Yeah.
Yes.
Can you please address the issue of noise pollution?
Right, yeah.
Impact on water?
Yep.
The utility rates for water, the utility rates for electricity?
But Dr. Cora, we have.
And, and, and the health impact. These are the big, big issues that have been raised tonight. I think if you can address some of these, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, but before you do do that, just to go back to what Dr. Cora asked of you to do, we have a representative here for NIPSCO. So when it comes to those specific questions, we would ask if you will please come up to the podium and to address those questions.
Okay. Um, for the noise, noise side of things, uh, basically in these data center build-outs, there's three things that produce sound, right? It's, uh, the cooling equipment, which is, uh, as discussed in the previous meeting, is an air-cooled chilled water system. Those are large chilled water, um, uh, 500-ton chilled chiller systems that basically sit out north of the lot there. There's the substation equipment, and then there's the generators. And the diesel generators, those are only emergency use, and they will only be ran for testing and maintenance one time a month in sequence during business hours. Uh, and that's just to keep up with the warranty and the emergency, um, uh, standards for that equipment. Uh, the chillers to the north, they run seasonally higher and lower, depending on if the temperature is warmer or cooler. Obviously, during winter, when things are cold, uh, sometimes the systems may be shut down altogether. And then, uh, the electrical system is pretty much identical to what we have across the street at the NIPSCO lot. And, uh, we've had an engineering study done, and that will be submitted. Uh, obviously, the, the site is zoned M1 industrial, so there's the standards and the codes and ordinances for your allowable decibels at the property line. And we've already done our, uh, uh, our, um, our noise and acoustic study, and we're already under the limits at the property line, so around the entire property. And that, it's basically based off the chiller operations, because there's the, uh, the other code, um, snippet in there about emergency testing and maintenance on the emergency equipment. But for all the equipment that runs consistently, we've already had the, the sound study done, and that will be submitted as a part of our, our application as far as the building permit plan set. But again, this is, this is zoned for the use, so that, that'll be a part of our design and engineering package, uh, which will be submitted, uh, you know, appropriately. And then, uh, the second question was the water.
Paray, regarding the noise level, the decibels, you know, you're talking about.
Yeah, so 60, it's 60 to 65 is, is the threshold at the property line. And that's equivalent to like a conversation or like your dishwasher, uh, running. But the, the thing is, you can't really take it on that, because it, it, there's a lot of variables there as far as if it's a cloudy day, if there's other trees, structures impeding that, which, uh, in the, in the progress through our site and design, uh, there's an existing tree buffer that we're leaving around the property, to the north, the west, and the south. And then along the east side, we're actually berming up the whole east side along Royal Road and adding, I think it's about 150 new trees and about 160 new shrubs on that side to screen the, the property more.
And when the generators are being used for testing, you said, uh, what's the decibel level at that time?
So eh, even at those thresholds, we did the worst-case scenario. So we did the southeast corner, the northeast corner, and along the mid-side of, uh, mid-length of the west side of the building. And just for testing purposes, we, they will not all be tested at once. They will never all be ran at once unless there was a power outage. So when we're testing these in sequence, we're still in the allowable range for the property line around the whole perimeter of the building. Yeah. Uh, and then to the water usage, uh, like, um, um, Council Beatty, Beatty Tree, sorry if I butchered that, apologies. But, uh, it is a closed-loop system for the first phase of this project, which, uh, there's always a big misconception when you hear data center, you, you hear they're just chugging water every day, millions of water, uh, millions of gallons of water. But, uh, in these closed-loop systems and, and water supply domestically for this project in, in its entirety is, uh, is the initial fill of the chilled water system, which I've worked with the local water municipality. And there's more than ample water for this site. And the only other water makeup or water usage for the building after the initial fill is just light makeup water for anything that may have evaporated from the heat and going through the process of chilling the data center or just your typical toilet sinks and faucets. So that's pretty much the only water usage for the plant. And if there was an emergency situation where we had to drain the system, that would be done in a controlled manner. And that would be an initial fill again. And then again, just make up water as the system goes through.
Any health impact as far as you know?
For the water, for the sanitary? No, no. So the.
Emissions.
Emissions or water?
When you finish, emissions.
Okay, so on the water side, no, it's a closed-loop system. We have specific drains designed for the chilled water field, I guess, field you should say, area to the north, mechanical field. But that will go into the sanitary system. And as you're aware, that used to be the old federal mogul building. There was a lot of nasty stuff that they were putting down after they were treating it back in the day. And working with the sanitary district, there's already enough capacity in that system to handle more than what we're doing there. And the water quality in Michigan City is really good. So we only have to treat minorly for algae buildup in normal pipes like a water softener. And so, but that goes down the sanitary system, which eventually goes to, in a case of emergency discharge. Otherwise, it's staying in a loop the whole time. Otherwise, it's just typical flushing your toilet sink. But if anything were to ever discharge, that would go to your sanitary district, and we've communicated with them. And the temperature level isn't that great coming out of the backend of these. So we will be going through the normal process of all sanitary items to your wastewater treatment plant before, you know, kids just do that for them. And then the emission side of things. Yeah, so the only aspect of this that will create emissions would be obviously the generators, right? So what we're dealing with there is we will abide by all I D M and EPA regulations as far as air permitting. They are diesel generators, which have a small belly tank on them. So they're under the regulated amount. But there's no large fuel diesel tanks or anything on site. Those will only be ran, like I said, for testing once a month per unit. And that's about 30 to 45 minutes. Otherwise, they stay dormant the entire time. They're not, at no point in this project will there ever be permanent power based off any type of generator on site, I should say. Yeah.
If we could have Katie, please come up from NIPSCO.
From NIPSCO.
Yeah. So specifically to your question on the GenCo that was mentioned earlier, I would just state that, you know, we're creating the GenCo model in order to protect our existing customer base. That is a proposal that's in front of the I U R C right now. And there's definitely information on the I U R C website. We can read more about the GenCo model and what that will do. But to, in order to serve large volume customers, make sure that we're covering the incremental cost for those customers to be served and also include contributions to the existing system for that cost of that utility so that would go on to the customer rather than on to our existing customers to bear that cost. Just ensuring that our existing customers will be protected. And of course, as we do with all of our projects, making sure that we are securing the reliability of our services to our existing customer base as we bring on new customers. Any other question?
Mr. Beatry?
Yeah, yeah, don't go too far. What, GenCo, what does that mean?
So it's a separate company underneath the NIPSCO holding, so.
Is it a NIPSCO company?
Yes, it would be part of our, it would be part of our parent company.
And it's only used with large customers?
Yes, specifically, the proposal to the I U R C would be for large load customer base. And that hasn't been decided on. So the threshold of what that would be hasn't been voted on by the I U R C.
I'm sorry.
So NIPSCO is providing, would still be providing the energy to the.
So there's no third party out there that's going to take over the power?
No, we would still be the service provider for the power.
Okay, thanks.
Katie, I have a question regarding the utility rates. To the best of your knowledge, does the utility rates for residential customers, does it get impacted when large users like this enter the market?
I would not be able to speak on that this evening. It is not my, that is not, my role is public affairs. I am not in our regulatory department. It's not something that I do on a regular basis. But I could.
Can you get in touch with somebody?
Yes, I can get in touch with somebody within our regulatory department. Correct.
Thank you. And then we have a representative here from the water department. You'll state your name as well, please.
Chris Johnson, Superintendent of the Water Works. We have gone through this process, and I've talked about this several times. Michigan City Department of Water Works was built at a time when we had a large industrial base that had no qualms about wasting water. As it is, our treatment facilities are designed to treat 30 million gallons a day. We currently operate as if we were a 20 million gallon a day plant, but we can go to 30. We've already tested that. Our average for the last year was 6.6 million gallons a day. Our maximum day last year was 9.1 million gallons per day. This year yet, we have not exceeded that amount. So basically, right now, we have more than, we're using less than 50% on our maximum day. And our average is a low portion. We have discussed the current plan and the future plan of volume. And when we've talked, we've talked about maximum volume. So that's going to be when the system has to be refilled, which is only supposed to happen really once. And so, you know, of course, there's going to be times where they have to do makeup water. And that makeup water will be part of the system. But even with the full, even into the second phase with the full build out, we aren't anywhere near our capacity that we are using today or that we're operating under today, nor are we anywhere near the capacity that we can easily scale up to with, basically, all we have to do is make some changes to some chemical feed equipment. But our structures, which is the expensive part, are already built for this. So we have this capacity. We're able to supply it. And they will end up, if volumes are used as planned, they will end up being one of our largest customers. But we have other large customers and communities that buy from us. And this is not going to put us into a bind. Obviously, if we were looking at a situation where that would put us into a bind, my tone would be completely different. You know, I'm not just the superintendent of the department. I am a resident. I'm actually a resident that lives within a half mile of this project. And I am actually for this project as a resident, not just as the superintendent of the Department of Water Works. So.
Are there any questions for Mr. Johnson? Ms. Councilman Dabney?
Yes, and you know, just hearing the comments of the public that are here, their main concerns are obviously health issues. Health is probably number one, from what I've been hearing, and then affordability. So when you address the issue of water, what could happen with electricity and so forth, if you could address for the public what that means in terms of health issues? Like I said, that's why I asked emissions, right? And then also affordability. These are the two big issues that the public really, really wants to concentrate on. So when you answer our questions, if you could point in those directions, just to say, you know, the increase in water that we're going to have there, would that increase water bills for the public? The increase of electricity for this building? And Ms. Eden said that she would get information back in order for us to publish out. Is that going to increase the bills of the public? That's where they are. That's what I've been seeing in my email all week. And these are the biggest concerns. They want to know safety, affordability. So when you address those questions, could you please address those issues specifically? Regarding.
Yep, well, I'll speak to the water affordability question. As I stated, there is no additional work that we need to do to provide this service. We're already a 24/7 operation. We produce water 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. And that will continue. That doesn't change our overhead. Our overhead stays the same. Additional water that goes out the door, we recover all that cost in our rates. And that water would be billed to this customer in the same manner as any of our other customers. There's, we don't have any special rates or anything like that. So basically, if a house used the same amount of water, they'd pay the same rate for the water as these folks will in this project. But yes, this will not modify the, this will not cause a change in the rates for the Department of Water Works.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mullenhour?
Thank you, Madam President. I've had my light on for an awfully long time. So I do have comments I want to make, what I really want to do. I am the councilperson who lives and represents Ward 6. So I'd be negligent if I didn't bring the concerns of my constituents forward. So these words that I'm speaking came from them, and the questions came from them. And you may not be able to answer all of them, but I want to give it my best try possible. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend the workshop because I was out of the country for almost a month. I did watch it, and I felt as if I were there. And I don't know, I may have gone to sleep that night and dreamt that I actually was there because I so vividly remember many things that my fellow council members asked about and said. So I just wanted to be sure that all of the Michigan City residents who turned in those orange cards, that they got answers to their questions because it looked like there was an awful lot of them. So I would be able to please let them know where those answers are posted so they can find those and read the answers to those questions. Per Michigan City ordinance, the noise decibel level is 60. It's not 60 to 65, it's 60. So that's an inconsistency that was brought to my attention. The other thing that I was asked about was the self-monitoring for the noise level. I'm just going to give the example of letting the fox guard the chicken coop. And you just don't let the company monitor themselves. So I would like this to be looked at seriously and see if something can come up. I've heard that the generators aren't used that often. But when they are, that's right across the street from a significant residential area and not too far from the preschool. So that would be important for my people to know about. Also, we've been talking about diesel-powered generators have natural gas generators been considered because they're certainly quieter and they don't let off as much pollution as the diesel-run ones do. So I would really like that to be looked at as a serious consideration to see if there could be a swap-out for that. Also, did your, the company you're working for, did they look at fuel cells as an alternative source of power? Did they look at those at all?
Not a part of this deployment.
Okay, I would like to ask if that could be looked at also because those are really quiet, no moving parts, no pollution, no anything like that. If you'd like, I recently attended a seminar online, and I'd be happy to forward that to anybody that would be interested in looking at it. But that could be another option to look at just to create quietness and calmness for the people that live around that and also the kids that are trying to study at the preschool. Let me see, I think I already talked about placing, no, I didn't talk about placing monitors at the roadside. If that's something that could happen, that usually is a better mark than just certainly self-regulation. I, today I was just contacted by the most recent EPA Director of Region 4, which is the Great Lakes here. She retired, she just left in 2025. And she's offered her services to anyone who would like to review the plans with us for minimal environmental impact. This basically is a free consulting service that's being offered to us. So I would like to look at that as a possibility. I think having an expert who's worked in the field of monitoring pollution could certainly be a source of great information and knowledge for our community. And then I'm for minimal environmental impact. I ran on the promise to my community that I must stand for health, well-being, and quality of life for all people, not just the people who live in Ward 6, but for every single resident of Michigan City. So my commitment is just making sure everybody is safe and they're not being harmed by this. And anything we can do to go through these various layers of concern that we have, I think would be beneficial to everybody. And then finally, this is just my dream, it's sort of my bonus ask. But Hitachi Solair in Michigan City has been a pioneer in establishing a pollinator habitat. They've removed all of their green turf and they've planted native species. So I would like to throw that out there as possibly look at what Hitachi Solair has done and think about all of that dirt. You know, the space you have out there, is that something that the company would consider doing for the community? So, thank you.
Councilman Don Krasulinski?
Yeah, just a comment. Councilwoman Mullenhour, I've already approached John, and he said that he spoke to another individual in their group about noise monitors being placed around the property. That came up at our workshop. And the answer I got back tonight was, no, they don't want to do it. So possibly with two council members pushing the button now, that we can get that taken care of. So I just want to let you know that. And I want to let the council and the public know that also. Thank you.
Councilman Nelson?
Sorry.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, I mean, we're on the same page. The end user here wants to be a good neighbor. And when we're doing these engineering studies and all the design studies that we're doing, I just want everyone to remember that this is an M1-zoned industrial site. There could have been a lot worse uses that could be put into this site. We're following all ordinances and codes required by both the Michigan City local ordinances and the state. So I just want to make sure we get that out in front because this was a discussion about tax items and that zoning change or plan approval. So we're going to adhere to everything that's required per the city codes and ordinances.
Thank you.
Madam President, just one comment to what John's saying. And I understand exactly that you guys are, you know, playing by the book. But the requests that we're asking, your company is getting a $250 million tax abatement here. And what we're asking for is monitors to be put up around the property, which it probably wouldn't cost no more than, I don't know, let's example, $30,000. So just think on that. Thank you.
Yeah. Madam Clerk?
Calling this.
The amendments by substitution? So I don't have to do it? So I don't have to do it, I believe? Okay, you confuse them. Okay, so is this one moment open? This next resident. Thanks. We still have to go because it's on the agenda. Right. Okay, that would be, uh, thank, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lee.
Oh, okay. Um. Councilwoman Lee.
Thank you, Madam President. Hi. Um, could you tell us a little more about your carbon emissions and what the plan is for the end company? Uh, to, uh, end up with carbon neutrality, please?
Yeah, I, I can't speak on the date on that, uh, but I could get some follow-up information for you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Dr. Cora.
Madam President, I don't know how, uh, we can get there, but I'll leave that up to you. But I would suggest we table the, the related resolutions till the first, uh, uh, meeting of September, like we did the other resolution, that way we can consider all of them together at that time.
Attorney Rags, is that doable? Or because they're on the agenda, do I have to do them each individually?
The, the resolutions have to be done individually, but it's, it's important to note that the original, uh, resolution confirming the ERA would not in and of itself stop anything else from going forward. The resolution for the confirming the ERA was simply an administrative thing so that it wouldn't have to come back before the council every two years. That's what, uh, Mr. York was explaining, that the entire city is designated an ERA. And in an attempt to not have to bring this particular project back to the city every two years, that's why the ERA was, uh, considered and was ultimately going to be, uh, or was ultimately considered to be confirmed here tonight. So just because that was not confirmed does not in and of itself stop anything else.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I did forget one point. Um, there was a question regarding, um, we were told at the workshop that there would be one or we were told at the workshop, there would be one building now and an additional building later. And the wording in the proposal said that there could be one or more buildings. So the way that's worded, it could open it up to three, four, five or six. And I know that's a picky detail, but it could be an important one. So I just want to throw it out there.
Do you want me to answer that? Yeah, I mean, there, if there was any in the future, it'd be potentially one more. But that's, uh, we have to go through a whole engineering study to make sure all the utilities can support it and everything, like we did on the first one.
So would there be any objections to changing the language to one plus one more?
No, no, there's no more available room on that site for more than one more.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. I would like to open this up for public comment. Public comments are now open under this resolution?
Yeah, this is Tommy Kalavich from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. Not only is this facility just down the road from the Neiman preschool, this facility also shares a property in line with Krieger Middle School, and that should be noted. Uh, I want, well, also to know, you know, we're talking about a forty-year tax abatement. What guarantee is that this company is still going to be in business forty years from now? I want especially to know, in two thousand twelve, the previous council granted tax abatement to Federal Mogul. The whole time, they, they had brought their employees up here from Mexico and we had to provide them with training or else we wouldn't have received our severance pay. So we're, we're just going down that same old separate, so no tax abatements for these corporate greed mongers. Thank you.
Public comment? Are there any other public comments?
My name is Lisa Valley. I, um, live at one six four nine Lake Avenue, uh, Whiting, Indiana. Technically Robertsdale, which is Hammond. I'm a few blocks from the Crossroads Data Center. A couple of things about that. I'm glad you all got to go visit it. Did you know that they're going to be expanding it by seven billion dollars? Could you imagine what it will sound like then? Do you know? Will you let John tell you about it? Um, also, when we're going to talk about how hopefully IDEM will come and make sure that everything will be okay. The regulators will come and make sure everything will be okay. As someone who lives next to BP and a lot of other industry, just like the folks in a working-class town like Michigan City, we have time and time again been told to go to IDEM, go to IURC, go talk to our councilmembers. We need to talk about the pollution that's happening. It's killing the people in Lake County. We have a ten-time higher cancer rate in Lake County. And it is because every time an industry wanted to come in, they talked to y'all and they told you it would be okay. Doctor, there are studies being done that say by twenty thirty, the fossil fuel use because of data centers will cost billions of dollars in public health. John, I am assuming, does not have a degree in public health. But for the press covering it tonight, maybe you could use his quote, "It could have been worse." Also, Genko is NIPSCO. They are turning it into a spin-off. There are plenty of good facts out on the internet, not just from Facebook. We are not stupid. We might not know what you know, but it doesn't actually look like you know much about this. It will be an unregulated spin-off of NIPSCO. They'll be able to build a ton of gas plants and essentially charge data centers whatever they want. If and when the data center industry goes bust, those power pants, plants are still being paid off by who? By us. I understand that things need to go places. I understand people need jobs. I really, truly do. But they go to all these different communities and people stand up. People in communities that have time to take off work, that could pay for babysitters for their kids, who could come here until eight-thirty at night, but not all working cities can, so Hammond couldn't. And Michigan City has done a really good job and you should be proud of your constituents and you should listen to them. Thank you.
I have another matter to bring before council this evening.
Is this in regards to this resolution?
Absolutely, one hundred percent is. So, good evening. Thank you, Madam President and members of council. My name is March Sala Konstak. I reside at four hundred East in La Porte County, Indiana. I'm here tonight wearing two hats. I am here as a La Porte County taxpayer and I'm here as a construction analyst for the Indiana Illinois and Iowa Foundation for Fair Contracting, representing local workers and local contractors. I'm here to discuss the maze project located at four zero two Royal Road. And unfortunately, for a project of this magnitude located in the city, I was hoping for more involvement from our leaders and elected officials. I personally witnessed many out-of-state plates driving in and out of this facility throughout the week, stemming from Alabama, Wisconsin, Florida, Kentucky, Ohio, Virginia, Minnesota and California. I ask everyone here, including Phoenix, where are the local workers? As everyone here is aware, this is a large development, regardless of whether this is a public works project or this is a private project. This is a project that has granted millions in economic incentives. It's insulting to local contractors that none, not one, have been asked, except for hearing tonight from a handful of small contractors, have been asked to supply numbers or to bid work at this location. I am sure council is aware, there's a multiplication process, a factor when local workers are on a project. Keeping money local promotes economic growth and supports local businesses. It results in job creation, it reduces unemployment, encourages workforce development for our younger people. Local workers love to work in their own communities. It brings a sense of pride, accountability and often leads to higher work quality and better long-term outcomes. And let's take it a step further. It's our tax dollars incentivizing this project. We can do better, Michigan City and Phoenix. Let's give our local workers a chance. And Mr. Beatty, I listened to what you said and how thankful we are for Phoenix coming here. But they need to consider all of our workforce and our contractors. Be a good neighbor. Consider our contractors here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Public comment on this ordinance?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Kelly Losinski again. Um, I just wanted to say a few quick things. First of all, I appreciate all of you that voted to table this for the month. I believe at this point, that should be happening for all of these that are connected to this project. For some of you, I feel like you are lecturing the public, like we aren't educated. I am highly educated. I know I have high media literacy. I don't just read news articles on Facebook or wherever you think I'm reading them from. I didn't come here with stats and statistics because you limit to me to three minutes. So I'll say that. And I'll speak up, um, on behalf of the community. I think we all are educated enough to make our own opinions. Um, we are only taking Phoenix's words on all the questions you just asked. They're trying to sell you something. Of course, they're going to tell you what you want to hear. Please, you cannot just take this little two-minute question and answer by them and take that as fact. Go do your actual own research, for the love of God, please. It's our health. And it's not just the water. I understand they're running on closed loop and that's all they're thinking. It's the air. And that's only phase one, they said. Uh, number two, um, sorry, I'm losing my train of thought. Oh, they keep going back to they're following the EPA guidelines. Again, I reiterate, those are being deregulated as we speak. So are you going to put in regulations for them if you let this go through? Because there are going to be no EPA regulations by the time this place opens. That's fact. And if you are denying that fact, you are denying our health rights. Simple. You say you don't know where we're getting our information? Uh, let's see, CNN, New York Times, Washington Post, Fox, MSNBC, NBC, ABC, CBS, they're all posting facts and articles and video articles and news articles on this. You just don't want to read what doesn't fit your narrative. Or those are the ones that aren't facts. Please. Lastly, um, I say again, they said at the beginning of this meeting that they have potential for different end users. That needs to be the answer here. Maybe an end user that gives the community more than thirty jobs and protects our health. That's probably what would be best for the community. And I forgot one thing, um, you don't know the end user. So wherever you went and visited, that's great. You don't know that's what's going to be down the street from me. So, and you can't speak to that. And it's not just decibels that contributes to noise pollution. It's the low frequency. Thank you. Hey. I'm tall, I don't know. Uh, I, uh, am Amy Losinski. I also live at one oh four Mayfield Drive. I do want to say thank you up here to the, uh, the council members that have been brave enough at least to table it. I was hoping at least we could get a table today and I thank you for your bravery. Um, Phoenix is presenting to sell this project to you, and I know she just reiterated it, I'm going to say it again. This is a sales pitch. They're going to say whatever you want. They're here to sell you on their product. They're here to sell you on their end user. Have you guys had a workshop to show in, bring experts, and I believe you talked about that you had some of that may be willing to come in, and explain the adverse effects to you guys? There are many people I'm sure that we could get to come to you guys and hold a second workshop with proper notification to the residents of this community that will actually sit there and probably tell you that most of the things they shared in the key findings, because Phoenix and the end user got to answer the key findings. Let's discuss that. It was not somebody else coming here or the health experts. Those people giving you the sales pitch answered the key finding questions. Um, again, we do not know the end user, and she just said that. The touring one site does not tell me what happens at my property. You cannot take what you saw at one site and say it's going to happen here. I wish, and I've said this to many who I've spoken to on the phone, you could tell me who the end user was. Because maybe if we could go look them up, we would get some of these answers from legitimately being able to research the person that is actually trying to build a half mile from my house. Um, Bron just spoke in Elkhart saying, "We don't have the power in Indiana. I know we're going on and on in power." That was coming from the governor. Um, communication from this city has been, um, lacking. We have an official website that neglected to post the workshop that you guys held on July twenty-fourth. That's where I should go to first to find when you guys are holding meetings. Your official Michigan City, Indiana government website. Then, when you want to talk about Facebook, if your city is going to open up a Facebook page that's representing the city, I should be able to find it there as well. You can't pick and choose what you want to share on that website. Um, you can find articles and that can check and you are able to go there and read all these articles, not on Facebook. Facebook is not my source. I read articles. As I read the articles, part of doing my due diligence to that is to sit there and fact-check who wrote the articles. I sent one of you guys, uh, article that was backed by WHO. I didn't have just fake facts to share with you. Um, and then other sources, as she even said, there are residents that are sharing their stories in these other communities. That's also where some of us are hearing the stories, from the people that are brave enough to talk, that are living next to these data centers, sharing their stories and sounding the alarm. Um, the low-frequency sounds is the big concern. This bends over the trees. It's not measured in what they're talking about here. My own son could sit there and say, "When they want to build their buffers?" Well, what happens when the leaves are gone? I don't have the buffer then. Uh, this is stressed again for
Ma'am.
One, it's closed loop
Excuse me.
With phase two.
Ma'am, your three minutes has passed.
I'll talk.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, council. My name is John Watson. I live at one zero eight seven seven West, eight hundred South, Westville, Indiana. I'm a business agent for IUOE Local One Fifty Operating Engineers. I'm also a resident of La Porte County and have sincere concerns about the four oh two Royal Road project, also known as the Maze Data Center. I want to make the council, the mayor, aware that Mr. David Fagan, Financial Secretary, Local One Fifty Operating Engineers, reached out to John Perro with Phoenix last week and has not heard from him. We note through the Freedom Information Request that currently they have a Wisconsin contractor performing site work, electrical contractor from Ohio, a demolition contractor from Jefferson, Alabama. We would like to know from Phoenix contractors which con, or from Phoenix, which contractors they contacted from the community to bid on this work, specifically site work. We heard today that someone placed a banner regarding working for Phoenix, which was placed today, will not mask what is currently being performed on his job site. This is clearly being done to receive tax abatements and/or incentives from Michigan City. I would invite the mayor, the council, to visit the location and view for themselves the lack of local workforce. Please consider people over profit. We are tired of large developers coming to Indiana requesting incentives and not including our people. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. This is the last call for public comment.
Hi, uh, Glenn Pludoo, one oh two Belmont Court. Um, I believe this specific resolution is specifically about tax valuation. Uh, I'll reiterate what I said in my comment for the last resolution, which is, I think, based on market forces, uh, having any sort of tax abatement for technological development is unsupported. But, um, I want to talk also about, uh, like, the other piece of this, which is not just the potential tax revenue we lose, it's truly the, the economic downside of this. Um, I'm a software engineer, so professional technologist by trade. I regularly use cloud services that will be provided by one of the companies, uh, that inevitably take this up. And, um, the current model for compute, uh, you'll not hear this probably in any mainstream reporting, but, uh, it's, it's pretty unstable. You know, there's a lot of macroeconomic forces right now that suggest we could be on the verge of significant economic contraction. But, uh, more than that, AI in particular, um, it's a bubble, right? There's, people have all these aspirations about like, There's people have all these aspirations about like, oh, it's going to displace workers. It's going to do this or that. But like, it's the same thing fundamentally as the dot com bubble was in the 2000s, as cryptocurrency was six years ago. And so in light of that, well, what happens if we have this sort of contraction? What happens if the type of compute that we're building or thinking about building in this data center doesn't pan out? Who's left with that bill? Is it Michigan City? Is this going to be just another abandoned blighted industrial property, the same as the windshield wiper factory was? How long has that been sitting there empty? I was born here 33 years ago, and I don't ever remember that plant operating. So just another thing to think about, right? Like, this has a shelf life. And is it going to be economically useful for us for the whole time that we're proposing to do anything? I, I have serious doubts about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
This Good evening, Madam President and Councilmembers. Heather Ennis with Northwest Indiana Forum, 6100 Southport Road Portage. I'd like to thank you all for having this public comment this evening. Northwest Indiana Forum is the Regional Economic Development Organization. And so I know that the public gets concerned. Non-disclosure agreements are very, very commonplace. We probably sign one a week with companies that we're working on trying to attract investment to this region. And companies will not look at doing business in our communities if we aren't willing to participate and sign a non-disclosure agreements. It's commonplace across the entire country. The types of incentives that are being looked for, I know that when you talk about the end dollars that are being negated, this building has sat vacant for decades and it's not collecting the amount of tax revenue that it should be connecting, collecting. And so getting a percentage of the tax revenue that you could bring in with this type of investment is significantly better for the community than letting it continue to sit dormant and not have investment in it. I'd like to welcome you all. We are going to do a tour out to Ohio to look at different data centers, talk to the community officials there, talk to the economic development officials there, and learn what they've done in their communities and what things that they've found benefits from and what pitfalls that they found along the way. So again, I'd like to welcome you to come and look at these types of investments. And know that when we're having this public discourse, that the way that we behave, the companies that we're trying to attract are constantly watching and know what we're doing and know what we're saying to each other and how we're treating each other. So making sure, you know, it's great to have, it's great to have this kind of public hearing. It's wonderful, the way that we've been able to be talking for three minutes and the way that we've all treated each other as well. I do appreciate that there hasn't been any booing and people have been respectful of everyone. I know it's an exciting issue and that there's people on both sides of things. But I really do respect the way that the councils held this meeting and appreciate the consideration moving forward. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I am John Carrington. I live at 140 Esther Street. I just wanted to say first off, the fellow over here that spoke earlier, the Q and A from that meeting a week and a half ago is on Facebook on the Economic Development Corporation's page from three days ago. And there were a lot of Q and As, and he mentioned a lot of the things that were brought up in that meeting. So get out your phones and you can actually find those questions. A lot of the, I think it's really important on a, on a subject like this, that we go to all of the meetings so we understand what people have already brought up. And I was just thinking, you know, I could be a proponent of a data center, but I'm not getting it from the Phoenix people. They're not advocating for themselves very well tonight. And I think to say, it could have been a lot worse, is not the kind of thing to say to a city government that you're looking for abatements from. That's just my personal opinion. And the other thing I wanted to say was, back during the lockdowns, we had a new technology come online called 5G. And there was all this stuff about how the deep state was going to inject nano ARFID things into our brains via the vaccines. And they would throw a switch and kill a bunch of us with the 5G towers. And I have a 5G phone in my pocket, and I think a lot of us have 5G phones in our pockets. So we need to be aware of what the real dangers are and what they are not. And there are data center success stories right here in Indiana. You don't need to drive to Ohio. You don't hear about them because they're not making any news, but they're here. Okay? So I want you all to know that. Okay? Let me think if there's anything else. I think that's pretty much it. I, I've heard a lot of good and bad and pro and con and all that stuff. But I, I hope that we eventually come to a mutually beneficial agreement as somebody who lives in this town. The other thing I want to say too is, why are we talking about the businesses right north of this place that treats metal? You know, nobody's mentioned that. It's right up against a residential neighborhood. So, you know, we have to be fair when we talk about these things. And the thing about the data centers is that we don't know. It's all a big unknown. Nobody knows what they're going to do. It's a new thing. So Phoenix is guessing, you know, and they can't really even say data center, you know, but we know it's not going to be an antique mall, you know? So I just think that open, honest, transparent communication is what needs to carry the day. And it's so important with city government. We know the previous administration, Mayor Perry, his administration was torpedoed for communications problems. He just simply didn't know how to hang up a phone properly. So, you know, let's just keep the, keep the communications open and transparent. And let's come to a solution. That's all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you. This will be the last public. These two will be the last public comment for the evening, and then public comments will be closing for this, under this resolution.
Angie Hensman, 237 Leo Avenue. I wanted to respond to a few of the comments. We don't know completely the details of what they will do, but what we do know is that data centers use a lot of electricity, right? That is not a hypothetical. We know that they, they actually use more, like double what we currently use as a city. These, these centers can use. Okay? That's a real thing that we can deal with. What we aren't looking at is the cumulative effect. We're looking at three data centers in La Porte County alone, and we're all on the same grid as Lake and Porter. We're all on the same grid. And they're already saying that that grid cannot support all these data centers. So that is one thing to consider. The other thing is this, if we were in a county that had clean energy and prioritize solar and wind and other options, this might not be so bad. But NIPSCO is actually backpacing their, their plan to leave Michigan City, and they're going to stay. Why? Because data centers need them there, right? So we're going to reiterate what we've already been fighting for years with NIPSCO about coal ash and the pollutions that we've been facing, all right? Only now it's going to be double the problem. Because now they're going to have to create even more energy to support these data centers. So you add, when we say emissions, we're not just talking about that building that's emitting the pollution. We're talking about the increase in pollution from the energy companies that also are going to be affecting our community. They already affect our community. We have a very high level of, of pollution already in our community from these things. But adding on data centers like this, it's something to be aware of. There is a large cumulative effect to these data centers. And the, the effect it's going to have on NIPSCO, not just the price, but the fact that with everything that we add to this grid, we add more, we add more pollution. So bottom line, thank you.
Thank you.
Don Babcock, 2424 Hideaway Point, Long Beach, Indiana. Long-term Michigan City resident. Unfortunately, well, fortunately or not, unfortunately, I got an opportunity to move just a little bit. And so I'm just over the edge into Long Beach, but still very much care about the city. I've been involved over the years. I know a number of you know me in economic development, at least 25. And we have been looking for the Holy Grail forever. And it's to try to find that new clean, high-tech industry that is going to bring good paying jobs and, and produce some value for all of us. I mean, we're all addicted to our phones and our computers now. And this stuff relative to using more and more AI and, and other, just the simplicity of using your phone, whether you want to call it AI or not, you need to have the data stored someplace. Our financial institutions, our insurance companies, other companies, they need to store the data someplace in order to provide value. Now, one of the things that's coming up here relatively shortly, and I appreciate Katie's comments from NIPSCO, is their plans are to close the generating station. That's going to put a big hole in our tax base here relative to the community. There's a company that's coming in, in an area that we have zoned specifically for this type of a process and a product, but company to, and, and the place has been vacant for over 30 years. Somebody said, three decades. I remember it's been vacant since I've been here. And we were actively marketing to any number of industries to come to our community. Now we have in our midst, somebody that is going to provide these clean, new, high-tech jobs and try to help build our local economy and attract more people with higher levels of income and education and to help our children have an opportunity in the future. And, and we're concerned and valuable concerns relative that need to be answered. And I think that, you know, first of all, there's no easy decisions in trying to move a community forward. Because no matter what we do, and the more challenging it is, the more important it is that we do do our homework and that we do listen to the public and, and that we do get the best answers we can. I've visited a number of data centers over the years. I've been a big proponent of data centers for a long time because it is the clean jobs that we've been looking for. So now we have in our midst, and I think we need to do the right thing relative to making the best decisions here for this evening. But one of the last point I want to make is, if we're going to be a welcoming community to any type of business, whether it's commercial or industrial or new residential development, we have to put in place standards relative to our expectations. And part of that is the zoning process. And the reason you have stuff zoned industrial or commercial or residential is to create places where the business can thrive, but the community isn't tremendously disrupted. So the folks that are coming here tonight, they looked at the land. It's zoned M1. It's, it's, the NIPSCO is going to be able to provide the power. We have enough water for them. And they're going, Jesus, looks like a good community for us to be in. And by the way, we're going to invest hundreds of millions of dollars in your community and come to some solution here that's going to provide some more value. So anyway, thank you very much. I know it's not ea- not easy being in your position, so I know you'll make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope you allow me to speak. I will be very brief. My name is Gary Brown. I'm president of Porter County Isaac Walton. This is not our first rodeo. We have stopped three data centers in Chesterton, Burns Harbor, and Valparaiso, and we're currently working on a double hyperscale 800 acre in Union Township, Wheeler, Indiana. Every one of them starts out the same, just like this. Every one of them doesn't want to tell you all the information. Every one of them has Trojan horses of things they will tell you, and you have to do your own research. And you should try everything you can to protect yourselves because it is totally unregulated. I repeat, it's totally unregulated. The largest global area of data centers is in Loudoun County, Virginia. It's a good place to start. They have been trying to legislate all the problems they've had over 20, in some cases, 25 years of data centers. That's where you should look first. Our chapter is known for helping with wildlife and habitat restoration. And I prayed to God, please give me something that also helps human beings. And a year ago last May, it dropped on top of my head like a lead weight. And I've been trying to keep up with all the information. It's hard. It's not easy. And I'm telling you, you started good tonight. It's like a baseball game. This was batting practice. And you had some really good home runs hit, and you missed some curves, and you knocked some out of bounds. This is just beginning, and I'm telling you that all the people that asked a lot of questions, when they evade by trying to talk about something else, that means they don't want to really answer that question. So please be aware that we are warning you ahead of time because we're not against data centers. Put them away from human beings, please. There is a, the last thing I want to say is, there is a zone of effects very well established by scientists all over the world. The first two and a half miles are horrific. The first mile is absolutely horrific. And there's more evidence every day that the low frequency that bounces around walls affects the youngest and the oldest in your community for three, four, and five miles. So please think about two and a half miles and that first mile, you better not have a school nearby. And I'm telling you right now, that is something they will not admit, and they will do a Trojan horse of a small thing, just like in Holbert. They pass a small thing about a mile and a half from, I still call it St. Mary's Powers Health Hospital, my favorite hospital. And then, oops, that changed now. Now they're going to make a huge hyperscale there. They got that approved and they want to change the whole ball of wax. They will want to tell you in their contract that they will solve their own problems. They'll take any big penalty. They'd rather pay $20,000 a month for a problem because they'll make millions per day. That's it.
Paul Preszwalinski, 1716 Washington Street. Longtime resident of the Second Ward, lifetime resident, I should say. I, I, I picked up some points here. And you know, I think what gentleman from Isaac Walton said it all eloquently. And I personally think that you should table all of this stuff for at least a month, at least, and get some of these questions answered and not submit. You have this agenda loaded all for more things on tax abatement on Royal Road. No, we all know that that's been going on out there for months. I, I drove by there when I went out to Beachside Gardens to, to get some plantings. It's been going on for months. And I will tell you this, is I think it's disrespectful to the city of Michigan City to load this thing up and not do the due diligence on this particular item. It's not, as the man said, it's not a regular industry. It is, as he said, it's non-regulated at this time. That ought to say it all right there. Okay? And I'm against giving them any tax abatement because once you do that, the cat's out of the bag.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Nora McDonald, and I live at 228 East 10th Street in Nelson Grove here in Michigan City. I'm listening to everybody's comments and stories and the reasons why we should have this data center. I agree with a lot of them. We need, we need jobs in this town and in this city. Most residents, because again, I wear multiple hats, and I work multiple jobs just to keep the NIPSCO electricity going in my apartment and food on my table and food for my cats. I'm a representative of that school that Phoenix will be down the road from. I work at Paladin. I'm proud to work for Paladin. I work for the preschool on Cool Spring at Imaginations Station, where our children go on to Nieman to learn. I'm so concerned for those children, I can't begin to tell you. At Phoenix, I, I want every single child from both my center and at Nieman to walk through your halls and walk through all of that data center and make sure that they are protected, make sure that they are safe. Why is Nieman not here? Why are the principals not involved with this? Where are the teachers? Where's the administration? Have they talked to the administration? I don't know. These are all questions that have not been answered. And as you said, Madam President, the answers are available, but where? And as you said, Madam President, the answers are available, but where? I want jobs for the city. Trust me, I'm one of them that have to work for jobs. But I want clean and I want safe. Vice President, I heard you talk about the non-emitting rays, that all of these things at the data centers do not cause cancer. You know what does cause cancer? Radiation. Item does not regulate these companies. I've been to those meetings in Whiting and Hammond and here. They do not adhere to any laws. How long will that be in place for? Until this company stops abating all of these laws that they say that they're going to abide by. Are you going to answer for every concerned parent that's that whose child is diagnosed with cancer from these promises that they're not going to do? Because I'll tell you, I've been to Whiting, I've been to Hammond, BP sounded like a good idea. Look at what it's doing to its people. Look what NIPSCO has done to Trail Creek. And the I mean, the catastrophic death to plant life, to aquatic life. I can't tell you how many times I've seen fish skeletons washed up on the shore of Sheridan Beach. We have problems already. We need clean solutions and we need to, we need to employ local people. Can you, can you promise all of these promises and then tell it all back to us? Because where are all these answers and these questions that you're saying that are available? I don't know, and I live here. I've lived here for almost five years. So I ask yourself, ask yourself if if this is safe for me, my family, my loved ones, these children, these children that are going to be learning down the road?
Excuse me, but your, a lot of time has passed.
I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Public comments are now closed.
He said, you know.
Yes, I did. And it was a courtesy to extend it. And um
Last one. I don't see anybody behind me that's wanting to talk.
And again, public comments are now closed.
That just shows where you guys stand with everybody then.
No, it's it's called Roberts Rule of Formal Order. This is not a debate, sir. Yes, thank you, Councilman Dabney. Um, due to that, public comments are now closed. Comments from the council? Are there any comments from the council?
I'm President.
Man Dabney.
Yeah. And it, sitting here listening, a lot of information coming our way, a lot of information that came from the the Phoenix group as well. And I ask, and this is a serious question, and I want to hear the the public's response to this. Uh, I see the look on your face. You didn't expect me to ask a question. Uh, I am asking, let's say we table all of these for a month, okay? And we get the answers to all of these questions, and these answers come back not favorable to the things that you have presented, right? And you know, the the questions are answered in the affirmative uh to be able to support the data center. And then we come back a month from now, and we start to have these debates all over again, and they come up and give us the answers. Will it be accepted by the public? Or will, hold on a second, or will it just create the fact that somebody will say, oh, they're lying to us? Because I'm seriously, I'm listening to you. You're asking us to table. We table, we run out, get the answers and come back. And I'll be the first to say, if I was wrong about something, even though I have not made a statement of how they work and 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 so forth, I have just listened to the information that has come to me that has informed me to make the decision. Uh, that's why I was voting not to table, not to table because of the information that I was given. So I have to make a decision based on the information that I have. And people say, well, go do your own research. I have done my own research. People send me to look at a data center down in Memphis or which has gas turbines. This one does not uh look out uh on the East Coast or some of the things that have happened, and they're not built the same way. But if we come back after so much, however much time that we decide to give, and those answers come back and say, you know, we should move forward with this, will they be accepted? Or will I just get shouted down and to say, ah, they they sugarcoated it, they lied? Because I, no, no, hold on, no, no, no. Because I will be the first to to say I was, I was wrong. Um, and more information has been presented for me to do what I need to do. But if those questions are answered, like I said, and they say that we should move forward, will they be accepted by the public? Because every person that has stepped up here has asked us to table. And now I'm asking, if we answer the questions, we get the questions answered.
What difference did that make?
What difference does that make? So you would not accept. So you would not accept. So you wouldn't accept it.
Order, excuse me, excuse me, Councilman Dabney, excuse me. You did, you posed that as a question, and it should have been something for them to think on instead of opening it up in this. This is not a workshop. We, you, you got the answer, though.
Oh, I'm saying, it doesn't matter.
Point of order. Thank you, Councilwoman Modenhour.
Just ask the question.
Madam President.
Comments from Councilman Preszbalinski. I'm sorry, Dr. Cora.
No, I don't have a comment.
Oh, I thought your light was on. Dr. Cora.
Madam President, I make a motion that we table this resolution um for a month and will consider those together at the first meeting in September.
There is a motion on the floor by, can I give it all? Please, sir. Thank you. We have a motion on the floor by Dr. Cora, and we have a second by Councilman Nelson to table this for one month. Madam Clerk on the vote, please. One month.
Yes.
Madam President, the um the clerk has pointed out that it needs to be announced that there was an author's amendment on the resolution. The author's amendment, as the council has seen, fixed various typos and whatnot in the resolutions. There weren't substantive changes, but it does need to be announced that there was an amendment to the resolution that was sent out. That amendment's available for public, but it does need to be announced.
Oh, my apologies. Um, so on resolution number four that we're on, um, there has been some amendments to the resolution of the Common Council of the City of Michigan City, Indiana Granting Phoenix, Michigan City Investment LLC and Assess Valuation Deduction Tax Abatement for Vacant Building Deduction Pursuant to Indiana Code six dash one point, one point dash twelve point one.
Where it all set? Now the motion can be considered, Madam President. It doesn't need to be a vote or anything.
Madam Clerk, if you would, there was a motion and a second.
To table.
To table for one month on the vote, please.
Ms. Tillman.
Name.
Mr. Beatri.
Hi.
Mr. Coulter.
Name.
Mr. Dabney.
Hi.
Dr. Cora.
Hi.
Ms. Lee.
Hi.
Ms. Moldenhour.
Hi.
Mr. Nelson.
Hi.
Mr. Preszbalinski.
Hi.
We have seven in favor and two opposed.
This resolution has been tabled for one month. Madam Clerk, on our fifth resolution for the evening. Oh, um. Can we take a five-minute recess? We would adjourn, come back at nine fifteen?
Yep.
If everyone will please return back into the council chambers, fifteen minutes has passed. Council members, if you'll please take your seats. And that's pretty good on that. Get around. It's good.
Got to make it work.
Nancy. Council, we're good. Okay, thank you. I hope you all utilize that five-minute break. We will get back into our agenda.
Madam President.
Count, Dr. Cora, yes.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to table the remaining data center resolutions tonight uh for reconsideration in about a month.
So are you, to be clear, so in other words, you're, are you making a motion to suspend?
Yes, I'm making a motion to um to table these.
Suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules and then table the remaining data center resolutions.
I'll support that.
Okay, um, we have a motion to suspend the rules to take the last two resolutions regarding um the Phoenix Investments and to table these for one month. We also have a second by Councilwoman Lee. Madam Clerk on the vote, please.
Mr. Beatri.
Hi.
Mr. Coulter.
Hi.
Mr. Dabney.
Hi.
Dr. Cora.
Hi.
Ms. Lee.
Hi.
Ms. Moldenhour.
Hi.
Mr. Nelson.
Hi.
Mr. Preszbalinski.
Hi.
And Ms. Tillman.
Hi.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
May I ask, may I ask a question real quick?
Yes.
And what I was hoping to say before we we went through that was to say, can we say we're tabling this for two meetings so the public knows exactly the meeting that this is going to come back rather than say in a month?
Yeah, we'll meet. I I mentioned first, first meeting in September.
Like, yeah, because we're not going to hold a special meeting on a, no, Saturday morning or something like that. Let's say the next two uh meetings.
Thank you very much. First meeting in September.
Madam Clerk, did you obtain that? Okay, so next on our council agenda, we are now on our first ordinance by title only, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance on first reading by title only, establishing a municipal motor vehicle license excise surtax and municipal wheel tax and creating Division Four Excise Wheel Surtax and Wheel Tax in Article Six Finance and Chapter Two Administration in the Michigan City Municipal Code. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney and Ms. Mulder.
And do the sponsors have any comments?
Yes, I do. Okay, if you you heard the reading of the uh ordinance, this is establishing a uh motor vehicle uh excise tax. And um this is something that we are doing. Um, for one, there was a possibility, we we were thinking about doing this anyway as a city, but the state has come to us, to all cities, and they've created two buckets of money. Bucket number one, bucket number two, that you can get money for paving in your community in bucket number one. But in order to get into bucket number two, which would add additional money for us to pave our streets, we have to pass a wheel tax in order to be considered for bucket number two. Um, so that is what the state is doing to us in terms of cutting funds. But at least in this case, we're allowed to be able to pass the wheel tax in order to be able to dip into bucket number two. So this is the kind of thing that we're fighting against uh with the state all over the place in regards to funds being cut from our coffers. But like I said, fortunately, this time, we're able to be able to uh pass the wheel tax in order to dip into bucket number two in order to pave our city streets.
Councilwoman Modenhour.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, this is one of the platforms that I ran on when I um was a candidate for um city council. All of the communities around here have this wheel tax. Laporte, Chesterton, I can name every single community around here. They've had it for a number of years now. What we've been used doing is we've been leaving hundreds of thousands of dollars on the table every year that we could take and fix our streets, pave them. And I'll have to say, the number one issue that I hear from most of my constituents most of the time is poor roads, potholes, the need to take care of our infrastructure. So this is our means to do that. And if we don't do it, we're going to lose a lot of money. And it's probably going to bow to about a million dollars um because um Councilman Dabney was talking about those two different buckets. So the state has tied our hands. We do it, we get the money. We don't do it, we don't get the money to take care of our streets. So that's why I became a sponsor of this.
Oh, good evening, uh council, council, uh council, council persons and presidents. Um, Angie Nelson Dyche, Mayor of Michigan City. Uh, a couple of things, uh, there is a workshop uh for the wheel tax on set uh August eighteenth at five thirty um in the ELC room um to talk about the wheel tax. I know I did a presentation once before last year um about the wheel tax, so we'll be having another workshop to discuss it um and talk about it. So there's a couple of things that I would like to bring up. So um cities that are casino cities uh hadn't passed the wheel tax, um including, I think Hammond did it in the fall of last year because we relied solely and predominantly on our riverboat. This year, um for our streets, uh our street department, we are funding the street department in the budget one point six million dollars of riverboat funds. Well, one thing that has changed in what has happened occurred over the last at least um eight years prior to me being here is we've eaten up our river, our riverboat cash fund. Our cash balance was eaten up over that timeframe. And so now we are paycheck to paycheck on the riverboat. Um, and what that means is in our heyday, we were receiving anywhere from twelve million, thirteen million dollars a year. Now we're down to eight million dollars a year in what we receive in riverboat funds. Um, so people can say what they want, um but council, we we spend all the money, you all right? We approve appropriation, overappropriation, after appropriation on things that um uh, I don't know, we just use that as a backstop, not thinking that the riverboat would go away. Um, I know when I was on the council previously in um two thousand eight, um, the forethought was, hey, we need to do something. We put some, some parameters in um to cut spending. Um, Mayor Chuck was the uh mayor at the time, and um we kept going up in percentage of what we were using for riverboat. And that council at the time put those parameters back in. Well, after Chuck left, um, we just went back up, up and up, and kept spending all the riverboat money. So our cash balance has really been depleted of the riverboat funds. So this wheel tax, what happened in the session, and um we were advocating, and we did get a win um so that it didn't become mandatory for us to pass it. It's not mandatory to pass a wheel tax. So that was a win for the mayors um that were down there fighting um because at one point it was going to be a mandatory requirement for us to get any funding from CCMG. So now it's not mandatory, but what they did is they stuck a carrot out there. So the carrot is this, we can pass a wheel tax and then it unlocks some dollars. So I will share just a couple of things so that um we will cover this in in the meeting um in the workshop so that people can ask questions about it. Um, we will uh make sure we have all of the numbers from our financial advisors for the public at that time as well. Uh, but what that does is in two thousand, um, this, well, in twenty twenty-four, um, Baker Tilly determined the city could generate additional revenue in the amount of six hundred sixty-seven thousand five hundred twenty-three dollars with the adoption of a municipal wheel tax at the maximum rate of forty dollars and a surtax with the maximum of twenty-five dollars. I will make sure we have a schedule so that people can see what that looks like. Um, and then um in passing the wheel tax, what that would generate in addition, um in twenty twenty- in 2027, we're looking at additional 204,428. So right now, what we've been doing, last year and this year, we went to the redevelopment commission, asked them for matching funds, and we've been budgeting money. But like I said, we're funding the street department to the tune of 1.6 million of riverboat funds at this time. So we know with the declining in revenue, we know that we're going to be down a million dollars from SB one for next year and the following year. And then in 2028, when the, all of the public safety lets and all those go away, we, we lose 3.7 million. So those are just the hard facts of where we're at. So what this will allow us to do is the flexibility of keeping our matching grant. We've been getting, we got 1.5 million last year, and we got 1.5 million this year in CCMG. So we were successful in that, but we had to cobble the money together for the match. This will allow us to have some room for that. The other piece of that is we're in budget meetings now with the departments. And what we've expressed a desire to do is to purchase our own paving equipment as well. So that, yeah, we can do the big projects with bidding them out, but like some of the smaller streets, it's harder to get to those in a package. So if we could, you know, utilize some of this funding to purchase equipment, you know, get the people trained to do that kind of work, we can get those smaller streets that don't make the CCMG list. The other piece of that, and I know we're working through it, is having a portal that people can see their streets when it was paved last, when it's going to be paved, all those different things. So that's what this funding is for. But we will have a schedule of what, you know, the different structure could be at a lower rate versus the maximum rate, so that the public can see it. And that'll be again on August eighteenth at five thirty in the ELC room. So more to come. But we want to make sure that we presented it, because if we're going to pass it, if, if we're going to pass it this year, to be able to get that money for next year, has to be done by September one. Otherwise, we will start in 2027. So it's a budgetary thing, but I think it's worth the, the conversation. You know, it's, it's what it is. But that's kind of where we're at funding-wise. And, and that's why I want to make sure at that meeting, I share what we've done historically with the riverboat dollars with the street department and also the CCMG money as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Dabney.
Yes, and, and Mayor, the, I've been made aware of that, that deadline date that we need to get this done. And it has always been my attention, intention, that we hear this tonight and then give the council a chance for second and third reading and the next meeting in order to make that deadline. So that, that has been my plan going forward. So we'll get a chance to try to beat that deadline if the city council sees fit in order to get that money in for the next year.
Councilman Prince Balinski.
Mayor, Mayor Angie, so it'll be what, 40 dollars per vehicle?
No, that'll be up to you. You're going to see a schedule. In the, in the, in the ordinance that you have, I put the maximum rates in there, but when you get, when we have the workshop, you'll see a lower rate and the maximum rate in there. So that you can, you all can decide, you know, what you would like to do. But I'm just letting you know that we know we have a million dollar shortfall next year, the following year, and 3.7 the next year.
I would appreciate for the workshop, if you can get the schedule for the neighboring communities.
What do you mean?
The, what, what, what kind of wheel tax do they?
Oh, yeah, it's public record. We can. Yeah, that's no problem.
Thank you.
I think I have it already, as a matter of fact, that I may have already sent to you. Yep, August eighteenth at five thirty PM. Any other questions?
No, ma'am. Thank you. I would like to open this up for public comments. Are there any public comments on this ordinance?
Yeah, Tommy Klavik, 1316 Ohio Strab, I've been advocating this ever since the General Assembly passed this back in 2016, and all the other communities had, Ron Meyer and Dwayne Perry, they just didn't, didn't want it to, because we're always relying on the riverboat money, like Mayor Angie said. You know, one of the big people against wheel tax, well, people from the outside will come here and drive our roads. You know, they, they don't pay into the wheel tax, but you know, that's one thing. Then, you know, we talk about the CCMG funds, I thought when we passed this wheel tax, first thing I want to do, I want to get those sidewalks in on Willland, between Willland-Paz Road, between Michigan City High School and the Little Was early in there saying, like we were promised when Paz Road was going to strike back in 2023. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment?
Yeah, your favorite person. Oh. All right, I'll be quick. Stephen Cornacki, 5410, Rogowski AF. You know, if everybody, if anybody's been to Portage, Willow Creek, that was paid for by wheel tax as a resident. I'm never a fan of extra taxes, but theirs is 25 dollars to answer you, doctor, per vehicle, and then it's 40 dollars per commercial vehicle. So there's a different tier. To me, that's digestible. If that's going to get the roads, roads paved a little bit more, so be it. I live on a private road, so you guys are never going to pave it anyways. So what's that going to do? Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Preswalinski, 1716 Washington Street. I just want to say, there's a lot of facts that how, how we've gotten here on this wheel tax and not ignoring the fact that it could have, could have been passed, but my, my thing is, is that I don't believe, because we had some discussions on legislation that I received on the minimum and the maximum and how much it'll generate. But you still eligible for the pot as long as you pass it. But I, I think if you look at the economics is that, you know, I just don't understand how we had a huge surplus in the last administration. And this administration is calling per mouth. They said it's something in the DOT that they had unreliable figures. Well, I want to say this, is that you cannot forget how we got here. Also, it's not just about the last administration, we had faulty figures in the first year, okay? That same sequence of events happened in the first year of this administration out of the Controller's Office. So you shouldn't forget that. So I'm an advocate of the minimum tax. Okay? Because I, I'll tell you the truth. We said we established money in a sidewalk program and also a brick street repair program, which I'm going to be looking at where that money's at now, where we're at. And I'll probably have to make another formal request, you know. But I, I believe that you, you need to do the absolute minimum when it comes to this tax.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on this ordinance?
Dominic Yankee, 904 Willow Springs Drive. I agree with the previous person's comment on a minimum tax. I think that's a good idea because as one of the council people said previously, there's a bucket of money that they're incentivizing us to pass this wheel tax, but we don't have, it's my understanding that we don't have to pass the maximum and that like even a small tax unlocks it. So I think that's a a good meet in the middle kind of solution is to pass the absolute minimum wheel tax and unlock that money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment? This is the last call for public comment. Public comments on this ordinance is now closed. This will be held over until the next council meeting. Madam Clerk on our next ordinance on second reading by title only?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the golf non-reverting fund 2508 to replace the satellite irrigation system at the Michigan City Municipal Golf Course. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney.
Does the sponsor have any comments on this, on his ordinance?
Yes, I just want to reiterate something that's very important, that they have money coming out of their own non-reverting fund in order to, to pay for these, the irrigation system. This is not new money that's being appropriated from riverboat or anything like that by the council. This is money out of their own non-reverting fund. We just have to move the money out of that fund into contractual services for them in order to be able to pay $181,000.
Thank you, Councilman Dabney. This ordinance that is on second reading was advertised in the Herald Dispatch, July 16, 2025. Former public hearing will be held August 4, 2025. Public hearing is now open. Are there any comments on this ordinance?
Yeah, I just got a quick question for you. Stephen Cornacki, 5410, Rogowski. When you talk about non-reverting, I'm new to government lingo. Is this funded by the golf course by itself? Is that what that means? Okay. Then never mind. I got nothing. If it's paying for itself, the only thing I have to comment on, if it's a municipal golf course, is why doesn't Michigan City residents get any, a discount or get to golf for free? You know, we get to part, we get to get a pass for Washington Park. Why don't we get a pass for the golf course? That's all I got. All right.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on this ordinance? Any other public comments on this ordinance?
Yeah, Tommy Klavik, 1316, I'd like to, I think they ought to close the north golf course and let it all become a public fishing site. Best fishing grounds in the city. Me and my brother, Tommy Lee, always gone fishing. You pull those fish out as soon as you throw in the line. I said somebody brought a boat on with the lake out there, and after that, they wouldn't let us go fishing on the riverside. I'd like to get fishing, but I'd close that north course and just have the south course for golfing. It'd be a public access site and a park and everything. That's what I think you ought to do with that golf course. And we lost a lot of revenue when all these companies left. Well, we had company golf leagues one afternoon and co-golf league my dad golfed with. We lose all these companies, there goes the golf league, there goes the revenue for the golf course.
Thank you, Mr. Klavik. Public comments are now closed. Comments from the council?
Yeah, Madam President, I'd like to have third reading on this this evening. Support.
We have a motion for third reading by Councilman Prince Balinski and second by Councilman Dabney. Madam Clerk on the vote, please?
Mr. Coulter.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Dr. Cora.
Aye.
Ms. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Moldenauer.
Aye.
Mr. Nelson.
Aye.
Mr. Preswalinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
And Mr. Beatrix.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Madam Clerk, on this ordinance by title only, please?
An ordinance on third reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the golf non-reverting fund 2508 to replace the satellite irrigation system at the Michigan City Municipal Golf Course. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney.
Does the sponsor has any comments on this ordinance, Councilman Dabney? No, there are none. I'll open this up for a public comment. Are there any public comments on this ordinance? Any public comments on this ordinance? Any public comments on this ordinance? There are none. Public comments are now closed. Any comments from the council?
Yeah, Madam President, I'd like to have third reading on this ordinance this evening.
We just did the reading.
Motion to approve.
We, we already did third reading and it was approved. So now it just comes back to the council. We now have a motion on the table by Councilman Dabney. Is there a second? Have a second by Dr. Cora, no problem. Madam Clerk on the vote, please?
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Dr. Cora. Ms. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Moldenauer.
Aye.
Mr. Nelson.
Aye.
Mr. Preswalinski.
Yeah, I have a question on my schedule here. It's got second reading.
We, we did it.
You just did it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
I made a motion on the golf course.
That's it.
I didn't make a motion on this.
We discussed it.
Yeah, we, on third reading.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm one, I'm one ahead of me. I'm one ahead of myself. All right. It's nice. So I'll run in.
Madam Clerk, if you would, complete the vote, please.
Mr. Preswalinski.
Mr. Preswalinski, your vote.
Mr. Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Beatrix.
Aye.
And Mr. Coulter.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
And this ordinance has been passed. Madam Clerk, on our next ordinance by second reading for this evening?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, amending Section 2-403A and B in the Michigan, in the Michigan City Municipal Code regarding the Resident Worker Training Development Fund. And this is introduced by Ms. Moldenauer, Mr. Beatrix, Dr. Cora, Ms. Lee, Mr. Preswalinski, and Mr. Dabney.
And do any of the sponsors have any comments on their ordinance? Councilwoman Moldenauer?
Just as a matter of you, this is to enable corporations and individuals and nonprofits who would like to donate monies for the purpose of worker training. This is just the mechanism to make that possible. As this fund stands right now, there's no ability for anybody to donate monies for this particular effort.
Would any of the other sponsors like to make a comment, Dr. Mr. Beatrix?
It's not only businesses that would want to donate to it, but it's businesses who have been fined in the past. And their fines are now sitting in a, a account, but we have no way of expending them. So, yeah, we can take donations from businesses if we ever get any, but fines are also included in this.
And, and I can add to that, because I'm the one that brought it forward. So, yeah, those fines have been sitting in an account since like 2014, I think, something like that. And so we have our first Indiana Plan cohort coming up here in October. And so the fun, the goal is to have more than one. But what we've asked for, you know, I've reached out to some of the unions. So as far as sponsoring, like, we want to make sure that each individual that completes it gets a pair of boots, work boots, gets a, a small stipend when they complete it. Because it's a two-week commitment to go through the plan, to get the OSHA certification and all of, all of those things. So we just want to make sure that we cover their lunches, we get them a pair of work boots, that kind of thing. So the fund is created so that we can accept donations from different organizations to support the program.
Yes.
Yes, the money's in this pot because it goes back to when Jeff Deitch was the Executive Director of the Human Rights Commission. And we worked very closely with him, and he was the champion of going out and citing businesses that weren't meeting requirements as far as hiring Michigan City residents for the projects that were going on. So I, last time I didn't acknowledge him for that, so I really want to acknowledge him this time because it was really very innovative for the time and really too bad and so sad that the money's been sitting there. But I think that Mayor Angie has found a really perfect and good use for this funding to further worker training in our community.
Thank you. I'd like to open this up for public comments on this ordinance. Public comments are open on this ordinance.
Stephen Cornacki, 5410, Rogowski. Why not? If the money's there, it's there. How many times do you face, how many times you hear a company say, it's hard to find work out there, one of this, or workers out there, wouldn't this open up the door for them to get their workers? And how many times you hear people say, there's no jobs out there? If this is an avenue for them to try and get employed, why not? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this ordinance? Any other public comments on this ordinance? There are none. Public comments are now closed. Any comments from council?
Yeah, Madam President, I'd like to have third reading on this tonight.
We have a motion for third, third reading by Councilman Prince Balinski, and we have a second by Councilman Beatrix. Madam Clerk on the vote, please?
Dr. Cora.
Aye.
Ms. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Moldenauer.
Aye.
Mr. Nelson.
Aye.
Mr. Preswalinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Beatrix.
Aye.
Mr. Coulter.
Aye.
And Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Madam Clerk, if you would, on third reading on this ordinance by title only?
An ordinance on third reading by title only, amending Section 2-403 in the Michigan City Municipal Code regarding the Resident Worker Training Development Fund. City Municipal Code regarding the Resident Worker Training Development Fund. And this is introduced by Ms. Moldenauer, Mr. Beatry, Dr. Cora, Ms. Lee, Mr. Chris Belinski, and Mr. Dabney.
Oh, I just lost my train of thought there. Um, I'd like to open this up for public comments. Any public comments on this ordinance on third reading? Any comments by the public on third reading on this ordinance? Public comments on this ordinance? There are none. Public comments are now closed. Comments from the council?
Motion to approve.
Support.
We have a motion by Councilman Chris Belinski and a second by Councilman Dabney. Madam Clerk on the vote, please.
Ms. Lee.
Aye.
Mr. Moldenauer.
Aye.
Mr. Nelson.
Aye.
Mr. Chris Belinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Beatry.
Aye.
Mr. Coulter.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
And Dr. Cora.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
And this motion ordinance passes. Madam Clerk, if you would read our next ordinance by title only on second reading?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, repealing, amending, and creating various articles and sections in the Michigan City Municipal Code regarding stormwater and drainage. And this is introduced by Mr. Chris Belinski.
And what this ordinance does is, uh, IDM has required all the cities, counties, towns to update our MS4, uh, both ordinances regarding stormwater and drainage. And Mr. Al Wallace from the Sanitary District and his hired consultants have worked on this. And if there's any questions, that's why Mr. Wallace is here tonight. But we went through a whole explanation at the post meeting if you were here. And, uh, yeah, that's it.
Okay. I would like to open this up for public comments. Are there any public comments on this ordinance?
Good evening. Paul, Chris Belinski, 1716 Washington Street. I'd like to know if, uh, is, is the change in this ordinance, is it going to create a different fee structure for, uh, the implementation of that MS4 program and, uh, the impact thereof?
Good evening, Al Wallace, with Sanitary District of Michigan City. Uh, no, there are no fees associated with this ordinance. It's simply technical in nature to, uh, bring, as Councilman Chris Belinski said, the current ordinance in line with recent IDM permit renewals that happened in December of 21. So, um, some of the council members were not here three weeks ago. And first reading, uh, in some of the documentation, just briefly, we noted that some of the sections of the ordinance regarding stormwater drainage in Michigan City is approaching 20 years old. Uh, the stormwater language is in nine different sections of the code. So we really need to consolidate some of that. Uh, we have the different IDM permits that were issued. And then we relied heavily upon, uh, the Purdue Local Technical Assistance Program who created, uh, model stormwater ordinances and technical standards to be used. And then we tailored that to the Michigan City needs. So strictly technical in nature, uh, there are no fees, no creation of stormwater utility, uh, anything of that nature.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Are there any other public comments on this ordinance? Any other public comments on this ordinance? If there are no other public comments, public comments are now closed. Comments from the council? Are there any comments from the council? If there are none, this ordinance will carry over for third?
Yes, I would like to waive the rules and have second and third reading on this ordinance tonight. Second. I'm sorry, this president came in a little late.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion on the table for a third reading by Councilman Dabney, second by Councilman Nelson. Madam Clerk on the vote, please. Councilman Nelson.
Ms. Moldenauer.
Aye.
Mr. Nelson.
Aye.
Mr. Chris Belinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Beatry.
Aye.
Mr. Coulter.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Dr. Cora.
Aye.
Ms. Lee.
Aye.
There is nine in favor and no one opposed.
Madam Clerk, if you would, please read ordinance on third reading by title only?
An ordinance on third reading by title only, repealing, amending, and creating various articles and sections in the Michigan City Municipal Code regarding stormwater and drainage. And this is introduced by Mr. Chris Belinski.
Are there any comments from the sponsor? There are none.
Nope.
Thank you. I will open this up for public comment. Any public comments on this ordinance?
Yeah, Tommy Kalavich, 1316, in the future, we don't need any residential stormwater fees. We tried doing, the mayor, mayor tried putting that in back in 2014. It was going to be a $14 and 10 cent per parcel stormwater drainage fee they were going to put. He ended with drawing, that's what Mariville, Town of Mariville Institute, they were going to do the same thing. So, you know, a lot of us, we own more than one parcels, and they say that's going to be very costly for us. So we don't want no stormwater fees ever. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalavich. Any other public comments on this ordinance? Any other public comments on this ordinance? There are none. Public comments are now closed. Any comments from the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Dabney and a second by Councilman Chris Belinski. Madam Clerk on the vote, please.
Mr. Nelson.
Aye.
Mr. Chris Belinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Beatry.
Aye.
Mr. Coulter.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Dr. Cora.
Aye.
Ms. Lee.
Aye.
And Ms. Moldenauer.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
And Madam President, if I may, I just want to thank Mr. Wallace from the, uh, Sanitary District on all this hard work and effort, not only, uh, putting the ordinance together, but the two big booklets of information, technical information that, uh, you did. Thank you very much, Mr. Wallace. Good job.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, on our next ordinance by, um, second reading by title only, please?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, ordinance of the common council, the city of Michigan City, Indiana, establishing an economic improvement district and authorizing and improving other actions with respect thereto. And this is introduced by Ms. Tillman.
Thank you. And I will have, uh, Mr. York to come up if, and if he would like to, would elaborate on this, please?
Good afternoon, Council. Um, I know it's been a long, a long night, so I'll keep my words quick. Uh, Skyler York, Director of Redevelopment for the City of Michigan City. Uh, what we're doing tonight, um, just by a way of introduction, uh, this is an EID that, and we are the petitioners. The Redevelopment Commission is a petitioner, as well as Clarence Holz representing, uh, one of our LLCs that we've created, and also Seth Spencer's online. He represents another LLC. I want to address an issue, though. Uh, one of the things that's been brought up is why did we not transfer the property? Well, just like any other good city, we're making sure that we have our developers, uh, making sure that they have everything in order before we transfer that property. That's the reason. We work hand in hand with our, with our AD, our Economic Development Corporation. And rather than transfer to a developer, we wanted to make sure we were protecting our city and making sure that we're getting all the things that we needed in place. Hence, we created two LLCs. They, they are in the position of the Economic Development Corporation. And full transparency, that's where that, that's where the ownership is. So, uh, really it was a protection mechanism for the city and our citizens. So, that being said, uh, I would introduce everyone. Um, how, how would you like us to proceed? Would you like us to talk about the resolution itself and then maybe give an overview of the, uh, project itself? Or would you like the project itself and then go into the resolution? What, what was the pledge?
Uh, overview and then into the resolution?
I think that might make sense. Is that okay with you all? Okay. Um, so tonight with me, I have, uh, representatives from Farpoint and, uh, NWI, who are the developers. We have Mr. Scott Goodman and Mr. Alan Schockman. I'm going to hand the floor over to them and let them do a presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan Schockman and Scott Goodman.
Good evening.
We did workshop, but, um, let me just review briefly, uh, the scope of the project. It's Sola, it's right next door. Um, about approximately $303 million project. Uh, it includes a approximate 240-room hotel. And I'm very pleased to announce, we did a press release today, that it will be a Marriott residence, uh, I'm sorry, Renaissance Hotel. Marriott, uh, has the largest loyalty program in the world. And we're very, very happy to, uh, have them, um, as our hotel. Um, would be about 21,000 square feet of retail, um, 188 residential condos, including 18 townhomes, and enclosed parking on-site for approximately 386 cars. Uh, approximately 206 of them will be reserved for condos and the short-term rentals. And 180 will be for the hotel, which will be, will be mostly valet and then public parking. Um, you know, we've talked a little bit tonight about community benefits. This is, uh, an extraordinary project in terms of community benefits. We estimate somewhere around 1,000 union construction jobs. Um, this will be an all-union project. Um, and our estimate over the two years is about 1,000 construction jobs. There will be approximately 350 permanent jobs, mainly, um, around the hotel and, uh, the retail, uh, and to operate the project management. Um, on the hotel alone, we estimate the average salary, including benefits for these jobs, would be about $70,000 a year. If you take that over the 350 jobs, that's $25 million a year that go to hopefully residents of Michigan City and the surrounding area. So, um, there's no tax abatement requested here. Um, we are making a donation of $450,000 to go towards, uh, affordable housing. I want to also mention that the city doesn't have to just spend that on one project. They can actually use it to leverage several other projects. Um, and we're paying approximately, we estimate, about $750,000 to the city in permit fees. Um, the other great community benefit will be, there will be public access. Um, we have a, you've probably seen the renderings. We have a great, um, elevated deck on the fourth floor that'll be open to the public. And of course, the hotel, uh, the spa, uh, the parking garage, um, and, uh, what we hope will be world-class food and beverage options will all be open to the public. Um, so what we're here today to talk about is the creation of an economic improvement district and the sale of bonds. So let me just explain that briefly. And by the way, we have all of our professionals sitting here if there are questions. Um, so there's, there's two types of bonds. One is a, uh, TIF bond, tax increment financing. That's the increment between the taxes today and the, the taxes we create. Those will go to pay back the TIF bonds. And then the EID, which is what we're talking about, the economic, uh, economic improvement district. Um, the bonds will generally be repaid by, uh, a room tax, uh, on the hotel stays and a per-night tax on the short-term rentals. The important thing here is that the revenue that we're creating to pay back the bonds only is for the project. The TIF area is the project site. The EID area is the project site. It doesn't go an inch past the project boundaries. So we're really creating a revenue source by developing this project. Um, so...
And importantly, importantly, there's no city liability for any of these bonds. So that's all falls to the project and to the developers. That, that is correct. There's, uh, no financial liability on the city. These would be developer-backed bonds. So they'll be selling.
Can you say that a little louder?
There, this is a, I'm so sorry. It's been a long day. Um, these are developer-backed bonds. So there's no financial, uh, risk to the city, uh, from a standpoint of paying it back or, or committing other TIF monies to this. It's basically, it's their bonds. Um, with that, um, I do have some, uh, some specialty people here tonight. We have Mr. Sean Peterson and, uh, Tom Everett with us tonight. Uh, Tom represents our, our side of, uh, the aisle, if you will. And then Sean Peterson is representing the, the developers. But they both worked hand in hand on creating the EID, um, um, legislation that's before you tonight. And I wanted to give them an opportunity to explain that to you and let you ask questions to them.
Thank you.
With that.
Thank you. As mentioned, Sean Peterson with law from McCree Devault, um, and Tom Everett with Barnes and Thonberg, serving as bond councils of the city. And, and this process is started due to the, the presenting of a petition by the property owners to establish voluntarily this economic improvement district. Um, what this district does, it allows this project to move forward with this financing. And with the ordinance before you actually, uh, permits is the finding that this project has public benefit, um, that it's a new benefit to this piece of property, this district, um, the hotel, the garage, the residential, uh, units. Um, it approves the, uh, formula for assessments, um, on the property, uh, to, uh, provide for those shared amenities, such as the parking garage and the hotel. Uh, and then it sets the district's boundaries and the zones that within the district that provide for the, for the, uh, use. And finally, appoints the, uh, initial, uh, board members for this district, uh, which initially are the city members, the petitioners. And then once the property transfers to the project, it becomes the project owners by the statute. Um, there's one representative of the city and then two, um, that are from the property owners. That's why you have the initial pointees and then the pointees upon the transfer. Um, as was mentioned before, um, the reason this two-step process is that, um, the city is bringing forth the, the petition. And then once the financing is set to close, that's when the property transfers. And that's when everything, the bonds close and everything closes at one time. And that allows every, all ducks to be in a row. So there's not a premature transfer of the property. That's why the development agreement is up that way. So as mentioned, it's done hand in hand to, for this process. And this is only the property that is being part of the project. This does not affect any of the property in the city. Um, the mechanisms here are only related to this project. As was mentioned, there's no liability to the city, no pledging of any credit to the city to this project. This is merely to provide for these amenities like the parking structure and hotel on the site. And I would just add that, um, at the, the prior meeting of the council on July 15th, um, the council did adopt a resolution that accepted the petition, um, to form the EID and also authorized the publication of a notice of public hearing, um, that will be held tonight. Um, uh, the EID statute requires the public hearing to be held by the common council before adopting the ordinance that would create the EID. Um, and so a notice of public hearing was published in the Herald Dispatch and was also mailed to owners of real property in the proposed EID, um, in accordance with the statute. Happy to answer any questions.
Um, I will go ahead and read that this was advertised in the Herald Argus Dispatch, July 18, 2025. Former public hearing will be held August 4, 2025. I would like to open this up for public comment on this ordinance.
Yes, Tommy Kalavich, 1316. I was, at first, I always want to welcome our investors from, from, uh, other developers from Sol and our investors from Farpoint Development. It's always a pleasure to see you here. I just want, the one thing I always wanted to say, I think with these other developments, I really want to emphasize more so there, we need to promote the Michigan City area schools. People are going to be moving into this place with their families. They all need to enroll their students, the Michigan City area. We have an excellent school system here. We, we'll boost our school student program. And this is how other communities like Crown Point build winners. You know, get them off the state finals and that. So I just want to emphasize that. I said, I also want to note, this is only serviced by the number one bus route for the Michigan City Municipal Transit. It only goes as far south as the mall property. So we need to up our, uh, our transit system when all this goes in. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on this ordinance? Are there any other comments on this ordinance? Yes, ma'am.
Good night. No. Good evening. Um, I just wanted to say that, you know, this is a long time coming. I think, um, I'm excited. I'm glad that they made the announcement about the hotel, um, about the Marriott Renaissance Hotel being the hotel chain. I think that's, um, a game changer for, uh, the north end, um, as far as accommodations in, in Michigan City. Uh, and I think this is a creative way and a creative use of, um, using a economic improvement district. Uh, they use them in downtown areas throughout Indiana. Um, this is the first time that we've utilized it. And I think it's a creative way of financing, um, a project this size. And I think it's a creative way of financing a project this size. So I am excited that this is finally getting to the finish line. They've heard me use some, you know, some strong language over the last year, but at least I'm smiling today. And we can get to the finish line. And I will say that this gives them the opportunity to hit the, the markets and to get this thing closed before the end of the year. So that's the goal, so that we can break ground and like really truly break ground. And really get going and get some jobs and get this thing moving. So we're excited.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on this ordinance? If there are no other comments on this ordinance, comments from the council, Councilman Dabney?
Yes, and I, I really thought the, the mayor was going to mention this because she had a workshop where she laid out the timeline. That we need to have things done and completed. And that is why on these next three ordinance, I'm going to ask for second and third reading so we can get that moving forward like we need to do here.
If I, if I might, if I may, resident, those timelines are, so there's two benchmarks, two major benchmarks. August 19th, December 19th, those are the two major benchmarks. August 19th, the intention was to have all the tools in place, the EID, the TIF, the bonding mechanisms in place. And then that way they would be able to take these tools and go out to the market and get everything kind of solidified before the 19th of December, hopefully. So, sorry.
Thank you. You're okay. So was that a formal motion, Councilman Dabney?
So yes, I would like to waive the rules on this ordinance and ask for a third reading tonight as well.
Second.
We have a motion for, to amend by Councilman Dabney, second by Councilman Chris Balinski, Madam Clerk, on the vote, please.
Mr. Chris Balinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Beatty.
Aye.
Mr. Coulter.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Dr. Cora.
Aye.
Ms. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Moldenauer.
Aye.
And Mr. Nelson.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Madam Clerk, on third reading by title, this ordinance by title only, please.
An ordinance on second, third reading by title only. An ordinance of the common council of the city of Michigan City, Indiana, establishing an economic improvement district. And authorizing and approving other actions with respect thereto. And this is introduced by Ms. Tillman.
Is, open this up for public comment. Are there any public comments on this ordinance? Are there any public comments on this ordinance? Any public comments on this ordinance? If there are none, public comments are now closed. Comments from the council. Councilman Dabney?
Motion to approve.
Support.
We have, we have a motion by Councilman Dabney, second by Mr. Beatty. Madam Clerk on the vote, please.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Beatty.
Aye.
Mr. Coulter.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Dr. Cora.
Aye.
Ms. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Moldenauer.
Aye.
Mr. Nelson.
Aye.
And Mr. Preszbalinski.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
And this ordinance has passed. Madam Clerk, our last ordinance for this evening by, by title only, please.
An ordinance on second reading by title only. An ordinance of the common council of the city of Michigan City, Indiana, authorizing the Michigan City, Indiana. To issue one or more series of its economic development revenue bonds. And approving and authorizing other actions in respect thereto in connection with the SOLO project. And this is also introduced by Ms. Tillman.
Thank you. I think that everything was already elaborated. However, if Ms. York would like to add any additional.
Yeah, so, so just to clarify, the next two ordinances you have here. The first one is the actual EID bond, correct. I'm going to look to Mr. Randolph from Polo to come up here with me to make sure I'm not messing up. The first one is the bond for authorizing of the bond for the EID. And then the second, the second ordinance is authorization. The next ordinance is the authorization of the TIF, of the TIF bond. So I just want to be, be very clear about that. And I'm going to have Mr. Rand Polo. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Randy Rand Polo with Barnes and Thonberg. As Tom mentioned, we're serving as bond counsel for the city. So these next two ordinances are related. This ordinance authorizes the economic development revenue bonds that would be supported by the EID revenues. That would be generated by the district, which you just approved by ordinance. And this ordinance, these bonds would be payable from the EID revenues. But as the ordinance states, they would also have a, a ability to be paid from the TIF revenues that will be in, in the next ordinance as well. The bonds are, in this ordinance, are not to exceed $80 million, which is actually the sum total of the two. There's still the possibility that the EID bonds and the TIF bonds will be collapsed into one series. And if that's the case, that would be this ordinance and it would be not to exceed $80 million. If it is just the EID bonds, I think we're somewhere in the neighborhood of $33 million for the EID bonds. But to just reiterate the point that has been made a few times now, these bonds, as are the next bonds. Neither of which will be a financial responsibility of the city. These bonds are payable solely, particularly this ordinance, the EID bonds are payable solely from the EID revenues. That would be generated from that district. And those are assessments that are assessed against those property owners and only those property owners. In the event there are any TIF revenues remaining, the TIF revenues then could be from that other bond issue. They also then could be used for this bond issue as well. And again, the TIF revenues are the specific TIF revenues from the project itself. There's a separate allocation area being established by the redevelopment commission solely for this project. And that is underway. That is one action that will come before you at the August 19th meeting, just as a final cleanup step, if you will, to create or approve the creation of that separate allocation area. This ordinance, though, authorizes the EID bonds payable solely from the EID district. No responsibility of the city at all with respect to repayment of these bonds. Unlike some other projects that you have done as a council in the city. I just want to make that clear. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any?
I, I do have one other thing. We did file a substitute version.
Yeah. I'm getting ready.
Got it. Okay.
And with that being said, I would like to amend by substitution. A copy have, has been provided to all the council members. I believe that you've all had the opportunity to take, to overlook those. I would like to open this up for public comment on this ordinance. Are there any comments from the public?
Paul Preszbalinski, 1716 Washington Street. I have a couple of questions and, so I understand. So you created a TIF actually inside of a TIF. And you're using the monies out of the TIF as a backup payment for the economic bonds? Is that correct?
Not quite.
Not quite, but kind of?
Not even.
Not even close?
Excuse me.
Okay.
This is not Q and A, it's just a comment, Mr. Preszbalinski.
I want to get it clarified so the public knows what's going on here, aye?
That's fine, but again, this is comments.
You're taking up my minutes.
No.
So anyway.
And please don't be disrespectful.
My, my concern is this, is that. How much actually is the developer paying for this property? Can anybody answer that question? Or is this a gimme?
This is not a Q and A. Those comments could be addressed to the clerk and we can do a follow-up.
Well, after you pass it, it's, you know, it's water over the bridge, I guess. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? If you would like to address that in a comment, you may.
If you want to. So you heard the developer mention a donation of $450,000. What, what, what we, what we did, we worked out a deal. Typically, you're right, we do, we've been classically, classically, we've been giving away properties. We did not do it this time. We basically asked for the donation to go into, I believe you guys have an affordable housing fund that you have established. Hopefully, that's where we would put that money, but we have to get it out of the, we wanted it to come out of the, to not be put into TIF revenues. So we asked for it to be sent directly to the city. And additionally, there would be the price of the, the, the fees that would then be, go straight to the general fund under our permitting process.
Thank you, Ms. York. Public comment, this is the last call for public comments. If there's no other public comments, public comments are now closed. Comments from the council.
Yes.
Councilman Dabney.
I would like to suspend the rules and have a third reading on this ordinance tonight.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rule by Councilman Dabney and a second by Councilman Chris Balinski, Madam Clerk, on the vote.
Mr. Beatty.
Aye.
Mr. Coulter.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Dr. Cora.
Aye.
Ms. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Moldenauer.
Aye.
Mr. Nelson.
Aye.
And Mr. Preszbalinski.
Aye.
And Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you. And.
We're on third.
Madam Clerk, on our last ordinance for the evening?
No, we're going to do three readings.
Oh, that was my last one.
Yeah.
Oh, third reading, I'm sorry.
An ordinance on third reading by title only. An ordinance of the common council of the city of Michigan City, Indiana, authorizing the city of Michigan City, Indiana. To issue one or more series of its economic development revenue bonds and approving, authorizing other actions. In respect there in connection with the SOLO project. And this is introduced by Ms. Tillman.
Sponsor has no comments at this time. I would like to open this up for public comments. Are there any public comments on this ordinance that is pertaining to this ordinance? Please state your name and address and your three minutes.
Paul Preszbalinski, 1716 Washington Street. I was wondering if the property was ever appraised by three appraisers to get a fair market value for it.
Are there any other public comments? Public comments on this ordinance? Are there any other public comments on this ordinance? There are none, public comments are now closed. Comments from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Councilman Dabney and a second by Dr. Cora. Madam Clerk, on the vote, please.
Mr. Coulter.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Dr. Cora.
Aye.
Ms. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Moldenauer.
Aye.
Mr. Nelson.
Aye.
Mr. Preszbalinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
And Mr. Beatty.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Madam Clerk, on our last ordinance?
In ordinance.
By title only, I'm sorry.
In ordinance on second reading by title only. An ordinance of the common council of the city of Michigan City, Indiana, authorizing the city of Michigan City, Indiana. To issue one or more series of its economic development tax increment revenue bond. And approving and authorizing other actions with respect thereto in connection with the SOLO project. And this is also introduced by Ms. Tillman.
Thank you. And the sponsor has no comments at this time. I would like to open this up for public comments. Are there any public comments on this ordinance? Any public comments? Any public comments on this ordinance? There are none, public comments are now closed. Any comments from the council? Councilman Dabney?
Yes, I'd like to suspend the rules on this ordinance and have second and third reading tonight.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Dabney to suspend the rule to have third reading. And a second by Councilman Chris Balinski, Madam Clerk, on the vote, please.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Dr. Cora.
Aye.
Ms. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Moldenauer.
Aye.
Mr. Nelson.
Aye.
Mr. Preszbalinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Beatty.
Aye.
And Mr. Paul.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Madam Clerk, ordinance on third reading by title only?
An ordinance on third reading by title only. An ordinance of the common council of the city of Michigan City, Indiana, authorizing the city of Michigan City, Indiana. To issue one or more series of its economic development tax increment revenue bonds. And approving and authorizing other actions in respect thereto to connection with the SOLO project. And this is introduced by Ms. Tillman.
Thank you. Sponsor has no comments. I'll open this up for public comment. Are there any public comments on this ordinance on third reading? Any comments by, from the public on third reading on this ordinance? Any public comments on this ordinance on third reading? There are none, public comments are now closed. Comments from the council on this ordinance?
Motion to approve.
Support.
You have a motion by Councilman Chris Balinski, second by Councilman Dabney. Madam Clerk, on the vote, please.
Dr. Cora.
Aye.
Ms. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Moldenauer.
Aye.
Mr. Nelson.
Aye.
Mr. Preszbalinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Beatty.
Aye.
Mr. Coulter.
Aye.
And Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you. And this ordinance has passed. Congratulations, Sol.
Thank you, council.
Next on our agenda, we have new business. The council has one appointment with the Michigan City Police Civil Service Commission's incumbent Leela Simmons. Term expires September 7, 2025, two-year term. Next, we have unfinished business. There's none. Comments from the public. Comments from the public are three minutes. Please state your name and address.
Yeah, this is Tommy Kalavich, 1316 Ohio Street. First, I want to get back to 402 Royal Road. I think Don Babcock and the Nipsco lady, they need to get their facts straight. That, that facility has not been vacant for decades. It's, we quit making windshield wipers back there in 2013. That's when Federal Mogul pulled out and went to Juarez. After they pulled out, Federal Mogul was bought out by a company called Tenneco. And Tenneco kept $20 million of Phil Pro and Champion inventory stored in that building ever since. It's been vacant since Phoenix bought it back 23 years ago in 2020. That's when it was vacant. So that needs to be clarified and everybody needs to know about that. There was only two people that worked there, Lenny Paulsgrove and Rodney Emery, ran the warehouse when Tenneco had it. They had all that inventory in there. And when WNDU did a piece on Michigan City about a couple of weeks ago, Mayor Angie at the 11th and Franklin. We all need to know that Michigan City got its name because this is the northern terminus of the historic Michigan Road. It's not because we're on Lake Michigan. A little story about that back in 2007, when the former Federal Mogul CEO Jose Maria Alapon came here to tour the plant. It was basically looking to shut us down. He flew in from the corporate company headquarters from Southfield, Michigan, on Federal Mogul, into the Michigan City Municipal Airport. And he got off the airplane there, was met by our management team from the, the plant. And Mr., the first question Mr. Alapon asked us, you know, we all get the question, why is it called Michigan City even though it's in Indiana? You know, our plant manager, a guy named Mark Durancheck, he lived over in South Haven, they were by Portage, they had no clue. So, you know, that's, that's why it's called Michigan City, because we're the northern terminus of the thoroughcrows. Go back to our pioneering days that we were incorporated in 1832. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tom Donegan. I'm from 205 East 11th Street. I would like to suggest that the next council meeting on August 19th. Have an agenda item calling for the police chief to review the recent shootings here in Michigan City. And give a full report on what's being done about the violence in the city. I, the mayor didn't mention this, but she said it on the news that the next town hall meeting will be dedicated to the violence here in Michigan City. It's on August 27th at the DAV on Ohio at 5:30 PM. She did mention the wheel tax workshop on August 18th here at City Hall at 5:30 PM. So for the few people that are left here, and there's only like, what, 10 of you? If you're not at the meeting, if I don't see you at the meeting, I know you don't care about the city. All you care about is the data center, okay? Now, let me just say this. If the violence isn't taken care of here in Michigan City, nobody's going to want to invest anything in this city. Gary, Indiana is the gold standard for violent, violence and disinvestment. That's a road that Michigan City does not need to go down. Thank you.
Paul Preszbalinski, 1716 Washington Street. I wanted to go back to the discussion on the DEI Center. I don't know if there's even a emergency program put in place and never got to that. If they, if they had to drain and shut down. Or, you know, what they would do if there was a, you know, a power outage on how many generators that, you know, their, their. Emergency plans on that facility. But I guess in the big picture is that who the end user is going to be in, in the LLC that they formed. And on the key findings that were brought up, I think you guys should hire somebody to look, look at this whole thing. And I do believe that that was a fair question to ask to get an answer if the property was ever a. if the property was ever appraised. That's called due diligence. And also, I agree with the gentleman talking about violence. Can anybody even give me one iota of what the hell is going on here when they shoot at the police department? That is a total sign of disrespect. And I don't know how we're going to get it back, but I think that the city needs to create their own gang unit if they don't have it already.
Are there any other public comments? Yes, sir.
Socrates Gray, 2030 Warnke Road, about a half mile from the data center. Proposed data center, or may it be. The increased truck traffic out there, when there's ordinance in place, that Warnke Road is not a through traffic area. And even with the construction, they're supposed to be using Tryon Road. But yet this morning, when I pulled out, there's five trucks coming by my house, five, literally, on top of each other. I have two incidents where one almost ran into the other one, was forced off the road. Another one almost tipped over because they're not paying attention. This is not a safe environment for anybody out there. There's kids in the area. There were kids on bicycles when these five trucks went by through when I'm trying to leave this morning. So it kind of irritates me. But they said they're going to follow everything by the law, but no one's holding anyone responsible. And I feel that we're right back to the same things as before. I mean, everybody was surprised that 11th Street's not going to be US Steel. It's foreign steel when you guys did that project because no one did any due diligence to make sure. I just don't like to see anybody surprised. But when I seen people surprises by some of the comments, it just leaves me to believe that everyone's not doing everything it can for their due diligence. And I'd just like to see Warnke Road established back to where it's no tra- no truck traffic as your ordinance says.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Any other public comments at this time? Public comments are now closed. Comments from the council? Are there any comments from the council? Councilman Dabney?
Yes. As everyone witnessed tonight, all of the resolutions for the data center were tabled. And then, you know, they asked certain questions, and I'm sure we're going to have to replay the tape to have all of the questions, you know, when, when, when Gail does the minutes of, you know, what questions were actually answered. And then, like I said, we're going to go out and try to find answers to those questions. And, you know, I almost started a riot in here when I asked the people if, you know, when the answers come back, are they going to be accepted? And I saw some heads nodding yes, because they, they really want to find the correct answers, just like all of us do, just like everybody involved. And so we made those, those, you know, those tables came through in order to get those answers. And I hope they, they really do find the people who can answer those questions and, and we get that out into the public. And when we started this whole process, you know, everybody stood up, said they did their own research. And I did research on things as well. And then we had people that actually went over and visited a data center over in Hammond. And from the things and the information that was given to me, I actually felt like I had adequate information in order to make the most informed decision based on the information I was given. But we did table in order to try to get some, some questions answered. And when these, these questions and these answers come back at that meeting, two meetings from now, that it's accepted and we move forward and do what we need to do in order to correct anything or ask for anything else. Or if the questions are answered to, to be sufficient, once again, that they're accepted and we get a chance to move on. So hopefully, you know, the, the people spoke. We got some, some, some tabled issues here. And hopefully, you know, once we find the answers, we get a chance to move on and continue with the business of the city.
Councilwoman Maldonar?
Yes, I want to address Socrates Gray's concern directly. I did contact whom I thought would be responsible to enforce that the beginning of July. And it was brought back to my attention that it hasn't been addressed yet. So I sent out an email encompassing more of the individuals that would be responsible for that. So hopefully, we have five people cited now. So I'm hoping somebody picks that up and does something about it. If they don't, then I'll be making a meeting with those people personally to be sure this gets taken care of. An elderly couple that lives on the road where it gets really narrow, where there's ravines on both sides. At least two trucks have gone off the road. And they're majorly huge, large trucks. And it really is a dangerous situation. So we have to get it under control that those trucks go north on Royal, go east on Tryon, and then exit to Highway 212 because that's what the ordinance states should be happening. So we'll get it done.
Any other council comment?
Yeah.
Councilman Pris Belinsky?
Yeah, in reference to the Warnke Road and the truck traffic there, I don't know if we're trying to talk to the police department and have them try to monitor it. But I think all we'd have to do is go to the developer and tell him, get the trucks off the road. That's, that's a city ordinance. They said that they were going to follow every city ordinance that they're building this building under. So that there could be another avenue, Councilwoman, if you wanted to go and talk to those people. In fact, I have the gentleman's phone number. John, that was here this evening, I have his phone number. So you can give him a call and tell him, first thing in the morning.
Are there any other council comments? Dr. Cora?
Thank you, Madam President. I, I just wanted to mention, I want to express my appreciation to everybody who was here today and expressing their concerns. And I was particularly impressed by the fact that many of them had concerns about their health and well-being. And I want to make sure that I do some due diligence on this matter before we bring this to reconsideration in a month. And lastly, I'm very happy that we passed the SOLO project, the financing of the SOLO project. I think it'll be a big deal for us in Michigan City. And I do want to express my concerns about the violence also. And we'll try to work with our police department to make sure that we can bring that under control. Thank you very much.
Are there any other council comments? I would like to finish off by saying, thank you for all of your comments on this evening in regards to all the resolutions and ordinances that came before you all. And again, one of the things that I am required to do is to keep the council chambers to run efficiently in governing a council meeting. And I will continue to adhere to that. Also, just a reminder, tomorrow is Michigan City Police Department National Night Out from 5:00 to 8:00 PM on the corner of 7th and Franklin Street. Please come out. There's going to be multiple vendors, events and things for children to do, for parents to do. Something safe, it's in a safe environment. So right before school. Then on August 9th is the Michigan City area schools back to school rally held at Field Guild Old Elston from 11:00 to 3:00 PM. So just a reminder, don't forget about those. And we will, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn. Have a good evening.